It was brought to staff's attention that city council's preference was that the accessory storage containers had urgency to it and that it be addressed as soon as possible as they were frustrated that we have not handled it in the last two meetings, even with the amount of workload we've had. So therefore, it is first on the agenda to be handled.
All right, just to further make my point, we could still do it even if we have to go to 11 o'clock, but why keep everybody in the audience waiting while we discuss that? We can just say we won't.
Just for clarification, item five is not a public hearing. You are more than welcome to entertain and listen to anyone in the audience, but it is not a public hearing. If you would wish to continue the public hearing from a month ago when we had the initial discussion, that is up to the board. It is not a public hearing.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Knowing that, does that withdraw your recommendation to swap?
Then that just puts the developer waiting, but I mean, I'd prefer it still, but if anyone else is feeling that way, who wants to speak up, fine, otherwise I'll drop it.
It was my initial thought as well, but when I asked staff, that was the direction I was given, that they wanted it with urgency and wanted it ahead of anything else.
Hopefully, it won't be a long discussion.
That's the hope. With that being said.
And we thought that on top of trucks, too.
Yes, yes, we did. With that being said, is there a motion to adopt the minutes as read or motion to change them?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Point of order, I don't think that we have even approved the current agenda.
We did not.
You asked for approval and Glenn jumped in and said he would like to move two different items. So at this point, we don't have an agenda.
He hasn't voted on it.
I guess, so I guess I asked if there was an actual motion or.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Moving on to item three, approval minutes or approval of minutes from the July 25, 2023 meeting, pages one through 13. Any changes?
I have a couple minor ones.
Please.
Page 10, second paragraph, second sentence, it should read lots there, comma, but it was at the cost of some issues. So just adding the word at in that sentence. And on page 12, two, three.
If you can give the line number would be great.
Oh, right. Line 514.
Thank you.
At the last word, one, another one should be struck out and replaced with the word exit.
Thank you, Glenn. Any other corrections? I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the amendments.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the amendment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will abstain as I was not here.
I will also abstain.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Gabriel. Minutes are approved as read with the amendments. With that, moving on to item four. This is an ordinance amendment regarding storage containers, appendix A zoning section 10 dash four. I will note that commission member Joe brought up a copy of the ordinance as or the ordinance changes as written from council member Miller. And correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, he felt that it was not depicted in the same manner that he presented it in. I did check with staff on this and they did inform me that the copy that is in here, as noted with some of the red ink on it, is the form that was handed to staff from the city attorney. Correct me if I'm wrong with that, Aaron? City administrator. Administrator, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Well, councilman Miller gave me a copy and just wanted to make sure that we all had, were on the same page.
Are there any changes on here as to what's in the packet?
The format looks much different. Could you pull it up, Aaron?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The format in the packet looks slightly different.
So it's just the format and not the wording as far as you know?
No.
Okay. All right. With that, Aaron, if you would like to just give us a lead in? Yeah. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the planning commission. Councilman Tim Miller has proposed amendments to city ordinance appendix A zoning section 10 dash four, the accessory storage containers. This item was on the June and the July agendas, however, it was tabled. I did cite state statute here regarding zoning ordinance subdivision four, making amendments. An amendment to a zoning ordinance may be initiated by a governing body, the planning agency, or by petition of the affected property owners as defined in the zoning ordinance. An amendment not initiated by the planning agency shall be referred to the planning agency if there is one for a study and a report and may not be acted upon by the governing body until it has received the recommendation of the planning agency on the proposed amendment or until 60 days have elapsed from the date of reference of the amendment without a report from the planning agency. I then reference East Bethel zoning code, appendix A, section four, applications and procedures, subdivision 11, zoning ordinance text and map amendments under procedure. The planning commission shall consider possible adverse effects of a proposed amendment. Item four is the planning commission shall make a findings of fact and make a recommendation on the request. Such recommendations shall be done in writing and accompanied by a report and recommendation of city staff. And upon receiving a report and recommendation of the from the planning commission, the city staff and the city shall schedule the application for consideration by the council. Such report and recommendation shall be entered into the record and made part of the permanent record of the city council meeting. Section 10 dash four, the accessory storage containers as defined in section one, general provisions of administration are not permitted within the use of not a permitted use within the city of East Bethel. So that's attachment number two. That is our accessory storage container ordinance in one sentence. I did include the definition from section one. The definition of an accessory storage container is found in appendix A zoning section one dash nine under definitions, which is attachment three of your packet. An accessory storage container is a container placed outdoors and to be used for the storage of goods, materials, or merchandise that is used in connection with a lawful principle or accessory use of the lot. The term accessory storage container includes but is not limited to containers such as boxcars, semi-trailers, roll-off containers, slide-off containers, railroad cars, piggyback containers, and portable moving and storage containers. The term accessory storage container does not include a garage, a barn, or a storage accessory shed to a dwelling provided such structure is not of the type, design, equipped, or customarily used for over-the-road transportation of goods, materials, and/or merchandise. Staff have reviewed the ordinance amendment proposal and recommend that the general regulations applicable to detached accessory structures as defined in section 14 subdivision two should also be included in an ordinance amendment, which is attachment five in your packet. Staff is requesting the planning commission review the proposed ordinance amendment and make a formal recommendation to the city council of approval, denial, or propose additional amendments for consideration to accompany the written report to the city council. Thank you. This is a, attachment four is the proposed amendment that I was provided after the last council meeting. It was handed from councilman Miller to city administrator Davis and then handed to me to include in this packet. So if the commission has a different version, I don't have that, but I would suggest making a comparison to what I was provided to make sure that the language is consistent. In terms of formatting, when we make revisions and the ordinance is approved, the service that we use to provide the municipal code will actually put it in the format that's consistent with the entire code. So I don't know if a subdivision A with a B with a sub one is really going to matter. They will format it to match our existing code. So those are some considerations. Thank you for that helpful information. At this time, I would entertain a motion for discussion and/or any motions in regards to this item at this time.
I'll make a motion to discuss this item.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved for discussion on the ordinance amendment discussion, storage containers, appendix A zoning section 10 dash four. Anybody like to open, open with their comments and thoughts?
I think the way that councilman Miller wrote this takes into consideration the general aesthetics of storage containers. He added that it shall not have graffiti, it should match the building, basically be a storage container that matches all buildings on the site. Additionally, won't exceed 12 feet or stacked. He also put in that the maximum square footage for a storage container shall be up to 320 square feet for properties under four acres. I asked him about this and what that allows is one 40-foot long container or two 20-foot containers for up to four acres, and then an additional 80 square feet for each additional acre thereafter. So basically for every two more acres after four, you're going to get another opportunity to put 20-foot container. He also added that containers will comply with setbacks and be screened. And so I think that all those are appropriate for, for what our rural residential and agricultural properties have. And I really don't see any reason to not approve this and.
Based on his opinion, though.
Based on his opinion.
Yes. And yours as well, given the verbiage.
I do have a question about this. I don't know the intent, but when we talk about being on rural residential or agricultural properties, that means zoned agricultural or agricultural property like ours, which we are farm and we're green acres. So does a place like mine get covered by this? I think it's kind of vague there.
Yeah, I don't think he meant to exclude anybody. I think he was just trying to expand the ability to use storage containers.
If they're agricultural.
Only in rural, I guess the way I read this is only in the rural residential and only in agricultural properties.
Zoned.
Zone.
I mean, that's the way you see it, right? But I'm not in the agricultural zone. I'm in our two or I'm not sure.
So then you wouldn't fall into that. I'll be upfront. I'm, I'm fully opposed to the accessory storage containers. I've, I've never liked the look of them. I know I was in opposition of the one that was converted into an actual accessory structure and the only reason I voted for it at the time was because he had already made massive amounts of changes to that physical structure to the point it was no longer considered a storage container. It was an actual accessory structure. But in, in general speaking, graffiti or not, painted or not, close to the same color, the last thing I want to do is open up the city to people having storage containers. I already know there are some out there that do and we had a hard enough time trying to keep them in compliance. I can only imagine once we open the floodgates to allow anyone to do it, what, what it would take. And we already have a hard enough time with code enforcement that to be kept up on this is, I think, something that we don't want to take on as a city. And I know I personally, I don't want to see it. But that's me. I'm one resident. I'm one body, one person on this, but that is my opinion. I, I think it's fine as it sits. I don't think we have a need for that. I think there are plenty of other type of accessory structures out there that are available for people. And I don't think we need to go to rail cars to do it.
I will say, you know, from, really from my personal point of view, in our situation, we had been looking at getting a container to store our potatoes with refrigeration because we don't have enough storage in our, our storage shed. And we, it would never have even been on our radar to think that we had to ask permission to have a storage container on a farm for us. So I guess in that case, I am in, in favor of it, but I think it really needs to be controlled, too.
But then I guess that goes back to the whole, how, how do you control that? And, and again, what, I guess I would pose back the question to you, and I understand and I can appreciate your position in your situation, but outside of, of yours, would you still, I guess I would then ask the question, would you also still be in favor of seeing it on the back of my property off a bike? Would you, would you be approved of that to anyone along highway 65 that might, that might fit into that that you would have to see and then they have large acreage and there's just multiple random storage containers out there?
Yeah, I'm not totally opposed. I really am not.
I mean, if we want to add a screening requirement, I don't see why that would be an issue. I really don't. And I think the whole idea is to try and help people clean up junk in their yards so that they don't have insta-sheds that are blowing apart, even though those aren't allowed either, you know, you still see them. And you see a lot of junk in yards. And I think this is a low cost and easy fix for that. And, you know, I think it'd be, you know, he also put in here, any violation of this ordinance may result in fines, penalties, and other legal actions. So I mean, if somebody's putting it on the setback, the city can go in and say, you have to move this.
And when they don't?
Then they can get a fine because it's already put in here that they can get a fine.
So then they're willing to pay a fee to keep a storage container on the property?
I don't think that's how that setback works.
No, but I'm saying that's how, that's how a resident who wants to be obstinate reacts in that situation. So if I put one on my property and I'd spray painted, it's rusty, it's holes, it's an eyesore, and then there's, there's complaints about it, and I'm not following code, someone writes me a letter, okay, they write me a letter, I ignore the letter, then they send me a fine. I don't know what the fine is, but you know, maybe it's worth it to me to just pay that fine and leave my storage container alone.
And that's what the comments were on Facebook, actually, because people were discussing it, saying, well, I'd rather be, I'd rather just pay the fine and not worry about it.
That, well, and again, I'm not, I guess good to know, I'm not on Facebook. I have a profile, but I, I don't actively participate on there, so I wouldn't know what's, what's out on social media. I try not to follow that, that type, that type. But again, but I, but I've seen it firsthand. I've seen residents do that. I've been here long enough to know that we have an extremely hard time with code enforcement. And during a time period when we actually had what I considered some good code enforcement, there was even more stronger opposition to residents to the point that they harassed the code enforcement person who was a female and they followed her out of the city multiple nights with their vehicle and from, from this building. So again, I have a hard enough time with people when they have an opposition to something and then we have to try to, try to enforce it. What happens when we do? I just don't want to open ourselves up to something that I don't think is absolutely necessary when there are other means and availabilities to do that, which I don't think is too much different than people's opinion about the next item we have on, on the agenda for what their opinions are.
Well, that's what we're here to do is provide feedback. That's the whole intention of the planning commission is provide feedback.
Absolutely.
On our future plans and, you know, I like what councilman Miller's trying to do. I think it's needed. I think it fits within the real character of our, of our community. And I think it helps a lot of agricultural properties to do things they need to do. It's low-cost storage. It's more secure than building a barn. It's more secure than putting up a tarp. I know that there's already storage containers out there because I see them. And, you know, this just makes sure that everyone's in compliance. I don't think that we're going to have every single person in a rural area or agricultural or farmer start putting these and stacking them all over the place. I just don't see it. I think it's neat-based and I think it's low cost. You know, you look at the cost of construction materials right now to build an entry-level pool barn, 1,800 square feet, you're looking at over $50,000. You know, this provides people the opportunity to get secure storage for under 10 and it will match their house as is already put in into his ordinance that he's asking for.
We had public comment on this like in April, wasn't it, or May? I can't remember. Was that really, really long meeting that we had? Then we have.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't recall.
Okay. Yeah, there was. I mean, at, at one time. Do you remember, Joe?
I just gone for so long. We, we, or we, excuse me, evaluated exterior storage for the business districts, but we didn't, we didn't evaluate storage containers. Two separate components. They both have the word storage in them and accessory. So it's a, it's a little confusing, but, no, we did not talk about storage containers.
I know, I know that we as a planning commission didn't, but it seems to me that there was public comment on that day for all of the ordinances. I guess what I'm getting at is, did we have any public comment on this ordinance?
On the current proposal?
I mean, or we had an opportunity, but I don't think we had any public comment.
Because of the interest in speeding this up, the public hearing will be next Monday night prior to the city council reviewing the amendment with your feedback for public comment. So there won't be an opportunity for public comment for the planning commission to hear it, so that we can move on, get, get an ordinance amendment in place if that is the case. And then we can tackle the next item that comes to our agendas. So the state statute as well as city code only requires that one public hearing be held and it can be held at the planning commission level or the council level.
Certainly.
There's no differentiation. So we just have to hold one in this process. So.
I think another consideration that we should, at least, well, consideration is that the next agenda item is going to be about an expansion of residential development that's going to add a lot of new houses that won't have storage. And so we have to be considerate of their storage requirements. They're moving into a rural area that's surrounded by lakes and outdoor areas. These, a lot of these people are probably going to be moving here to try to be part of that. And they won't have anywhere for storage. They'll have their two car garages where they'll put their cars. So where are they going to put their toys? They're going to have to have storage. And are we going to allow more storage facilities to build up? Or are we going to allow rural residents to store locally and then open up vacancies so that these newcomers can actually have storage? And that's just.
But we're not talking about.
None of these would be allowed in, in the next agenda item.
Right.
Not be allowed.
He was saying about opening up vacancy in current storage facilities. Is that what you're implying? So that other people who don't have the same opportunity would be able to rent from these facilities?
Yeah, and put, so R1 and the R2 and the townhomes that are coming in, they'll have places for their vaults rather than full occupancy. And I don't know the occupancy status of the storage areas, but I think that's something we should consider as well.
I, I misinterpreted what you were saying. I thought you were going a different direction. Yeah, no, that's how I took it, too, is how he had said it. So I, I guess for me, then I would, I would, I would counter that with, where's the consideration for the reason to why there's not allowable storage containers currently? I think you have to consider that as why it's currently excluded. And it's not just East Bethel. We're not alone in the fact that we, that we do this. So where's the consideration for why we don't as opposed to exactly why we should? Again, we have a hard enough time with code enforcement on a number of issues. I really don't want to see five, 10 years down the road, the problems that could come from this because a handful of people reached out and, and wanted a cheaper solution. And there are other solutions for storage containers. I'm not about the, or not storage containers, but for exterior storage than this. But I, it's not my position to be up here to tell people how exactly they should be doing it. What's up here before us is whether we should or shouldn't allow essentially rail cars and buck, and metal, big metal containers in people's yards. And the more land they have, the more containers they can have. I just, I don't, I don't see that for our city. I think we have a hard enough time trying to accomplish the goals that we, that we, at least, I was under the impression that we were setting out for, which was making the highway a, a well-developed area that fits our aesthetic to go with the water treatment facility that, that we've had for now a decade and we've been trying to dig out, out from. And the last thing I want to do is create another piece to this that makes us look unattractive and again, give the city more difficulty trying to.
Can I interject with the question? And I'm, at this point, I'm, I'm not too heavily swayed either way. But as we sit right now, you even mentioned that you've seen them in people's yards.
Well, absolutely. There's a couple in my neighborhood.
Right. So right now, we're at 100% non-compliance. And so as far as code enforcement goes, if we're having issue enforcing that, there's no, it's, 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 you're trying to enforce a lot more. Now, if something like this were in place, do you not feel that maybe some of these people could become in compliance in a way that's more, I, I understand what you're saying about, you know, what, what aesthetic appeal really is there to a shipping container in a yard. But, you know, I think what Joe is getting at, Mr. Miller, just from that perspective, how do you raise that bar so now it's not just, I'm going to do it, screw you guys, I'll pay the fine, to, I want to do it, now I can work with the city to do it. I can make it to a certain standard so it's not as much of an eyesore. Like, I get it, you know, I, you know, from a base level, a shipping container belongs in a shipping yard. You know, that, that makes sense to me, not next to somebody's garage because, you know, they had too much stuff. But again, like you were saying, who are you to tell people what they can do with their property? So just as far as argument's sake, right now we have people in East Bethel with 100% non-compliance. This would allow them away. So food for thought. Again, I'm not pushing one we're going to get.
So again, forgiveness for those, for automatic forgiveness for those who are already going outside the, you know, ignoring it. And again, already shows that we have a hard enough time managing and being able to regulate the ones that we do have. Imagine when that's times 100, if there's 10 out there right now and now there's 100 and there's still 10 to 20 that don't want to be compliant and we're wasting resources. And we're wasting resources trying to manage that for something that I, again, my personal opinion, I feel is not an aesthetic that we wanna see driving by majority of the city. Because majority of the city is a rural residential area, so, but.
Mr. Chair, if I can provide three points of clarity, if you will, uh, to Commissioner Ryder's suggestion of screening. Um, we, we do have a permit requirement, uh, building permit requirement for fences over six feet tall. If you permit a twelve foot storage container, you're gonna need at least a twelve foot fence, that's gonna make them have to get a building permit. I don't think the idea is to, uh, force our residents to get building permits to have storage. So I just wanna put that on there.
Cause now you also just added a few thousand dollars to that bill to hide your building that you're trying to avoid.
That for clarity, uh, number two, um, I have directed code enforcement staff to withhold code enforcement on storage containers post, uh, Councilman Miller's ordinance proposal. So we haven't done anything with existing storage containers in about three months as far as code enforcement goes. So some of those that you might be seeing, we could potentially have code enforcement cases on. But because there was the consideration for an ordinance amendment, we didn't wanna be spending any extra time doing things that.
May not be worth it.
In a month, they may be allowable, so we, we held on that. And then, um, the other point of clarity for code enforcement, if you will, our current procedure, which is defined in our, uh, city code is, the first violation noted after numerous warnings is a fifty dollar fine, followed by a hundred and fifty dollar fine, followed by a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, followed by a referral to the criminal courts. So for someone who doesn't want their storage container to be in compliance, if they continue to ignore the code enforcement letters, they'll eventually find themselves in criminal court, which I don't think is the intent of the ordinance either. So I don't know that code enforcement is the answer to this. Um, ultimately, we do have a section in our code that talks about abatement and we could certainly get a court order to remove storage containers. But now the city has no place to own and place storage containers, nor do we wanna encumber that cost. So those are all definite considerations in terms of what you guys are talking about, uh, in the realm of storage containers. So I just wanted those for clarification.
Besides the one, I guess notable, uh, standout in Coon Lake, uh, Coon Lake, uh, beach, do you get a lot of complaints about storage containers?
We do, yep, uh, since my time here, I think we've removed probably eight of them from city limits.
And how long have you been here?
Um, June was a full year, so just over, just over.
So, so, so it almost once every other month?
Yes.
And what type of zoning are those in?
We've, uh, um, I, I believe they've all been in residential zones.
So rural residential or, or one or two?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had them in both. Um, some of our, uh, industrial properties have them, but they're very well screened. Um, and we've not had any complaints and as you all know, we are complaint based on code enforcement. So, uh, until someone actually makes a complaint about them in a commercial or industrial park, we likely wouldn't take any action anyway. Just like in the residential area, there may be some that exist that are hidden far beyond, uh, visible sight from the right of way that we don't know about, that a neighbor may see, um, and we would entertain a complaint if a neighbor would call that in. So all, all valid, uh, considerations.
Can you provide like a general tone or like what the feedback is on the complaint or just the complaints, the complaint? Are they, are they describing what they don't like about it or not reading into it?
Uh, I feel like most of our residents know that they're not allowed. And then they drive by and see one and they're like, ah, I don't wanna see that in my neighborhood. And, and granted, most of them are placed right in the front yard, which are highly visible. Um, and that's where it generates a complaint, when it's on the only in and out street to a subdivision and it's right in the front yard and it's not a temporary moving situation, you know, we do allow for contractors and or temporary moves to, um, utilize job boxes, if you will, or, or storage pods to move in and out. And, um, typically with the construction sites, we withhold the certificate of occupancy for the building until that storage container is removed off the job site, then we issue the certificate, certificate of occupancy. That gives us a little bit of leverage to make sure that it's gone, so, um.
I guess my, I guess, uh, recommendation that I would have for this was to, would add that, um, it might fall within the setback requirement, just, but just really explicitly say that it should be in the rear yard behind the halls.
I agree completely, that's why I was just trying to comb through here and see if it, that was in there and it's not at all.
So that was, uh, staff, my recommendation is to look at the detached accessory structure requirements and potentially use those as a standard for storage containers. Which also does contain that it can't be placed in front of the front line of the house.
Right.
Um, can't be, uh, placed on a property prior to a primary residence, you can't live in it. Um, there are a number of things that we may not want people doing in storage containers. But certainly we could dissect the general regulations from detached accessory structures and add those to the amendment per your recommendation.
If it was to be approved.
If it were to be approved or would be your recommendation to add some of those things. Um, that was the cleanest way, thinking about it in terms of if it's too expensive to build a detached accessory structure or a shed, but we're gonna replace it with a storage container, but why shouldn't the shed requirements then sort of take the place of the requirements for the storage containers? If it's purposely for stor, the purpose is storage.
If it's an allowable storage, yes, that would, that would be a reasonable.
That was my recommendation to remedy some of those, you know, what if scenarios, uh, that may not be addressed specifically in the amendment. And granted, yes, the, the, uh, inclusion of two A, um, the storage container shall comply with all setback requirements. Uh, two B, storage container shall comply with all other applicable ordinances and regulations, it's pretty gray. Um, what I might consider applicable today might not be applicable tomorrow. Um, based on the community standard and those kind of things. So, um, that was my recommendation for the detached accessory structure, uh, general regulations for your consideration.
I'll have to say, I, I'm not in favor of, of storage units like this, but I understand the point of some people needing them and if we can get them placed on the property with, you know, the setbacks required and a little bit of color to match and make it at least not stand out and look ugly. I don't, I, I don't like them, but if we must have them.
I guess I don't see that, and, and again, I'm not arguing your, your point or your opinion. I guess, to me, the must part doesn't, I think the part I, I hold issue with, because if somebody must have storage, there are other means and ways to store.
Yeah, there's other ways.
And just because there's a feasible option, that may be an alternative, does not always mean that it is the appropriate one.
Uh, based on the tone of the, um, Councilman comments, I, I don't think that, I think this is gonna get passed. And they're asking for our feedback on how to make it better, not whether we're for or against it.
Well, I think that's awfully presumptuous for something that hasn't passed yet and they're asking our opinion. And again, as a resident, I'm, I'm giving mine, my, my tone aside, again, yes, this is something I don't care to see. And I, you know, you know, being reminded that something's not done in, in a timely manner when we've had a very large schedule and a number of long meetings, yes, that does add to my, to my tone. But again, that does not change my opinion or, or my thought process and the fact that I don't feel that, that these are appropriate accessory storage for the city of East Bethel, at least not that I would like to see with the direction that the city is moving. I think it'd be a regression and not a progression.
I'd like to point out an exception in, in my mind about these, which is, um, railroad cars or box cars that are wood. I know of two, one in Oak Grove and one on the street I live on, and they both actually add a lot of character. And totally different than a, um, storage container. Cause they actually have a design to them that was meant for the railroad aesthetic. And they, they look nice in a, in a yard, especially this one I saw in Oak Grove.
Do you think those are being used for storage or for kinda, um, decoration?
No, they're for storage.
I think you probably hit the nail on the head when you said exception.
Thank you.
I don't think we're gonna get a bunch of decorative tr, train cars in people's yards.
Right, but they're lumped in with everything else here.
One thing I do see in here that I'm, it makes me a little wary is that, um, it's, it's maximum square footage of storage container shall be up to three hundred and twenty square feet, which I believe you said, Joe, was two twenty foot storage containers or one forty foot?
Yep.
Which, um, and for properties under four acres, and that's just everybody.
In rural, rural residential, which is.
That's RR district.
Okay.
So the smallest RR is one point five, I believe, unless there's a small one, but I'm pretty sure that.
So carrying on to that, even on a one point five, you know, like, some things that I would have concern about is, yes, are they gonna sit right next to the house where everybody driving by is gonna see it? Is it feasible to tuck it behind the home like you had spoken of on a one point five acre lot? Yeah, so.
I guess I, I just, I see it getting out of hand real quick.
And that, you know, if you, if you carried on, you know, residents who don't intend to stay in the city, you know, they want the shipping container now and then they don't when they leave, I'm, I'm, I wouldn't be too inclined to take it with me. That's a, that's a hassle, so, I mean, it, it's perpetuated into the future too now.
Well, you know, conversely, if somebody's living on a rural property and moving to one, that's gonna make their moving a lot easier because they'll fill their storage container up.
Sure, sure.
Potential.
There's always the chance.
Always, I mean, there's, we can't prepare for everything, I think that, um, to set standards, make sure that people don't have to hide it. Get a, you know, a tan gin box and then don't paint it because you're just worried it's gonna get, you're gonna get totally taken out. Gives people a little bit of sustainability with their, their boxes and, you know, I guess they'll have to.
What about the diminished value of a neighbor though? You know, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm listing my house for sale and the neighbor next door has got a vacant lot that he decides he can put a storage container on and someone coming to look at my potential sale sees that and goes, I'm not living next to a storage container, look at that rust bucket.
I mean, there's all sorts of stuff to consider. Our next agenda item is talking about adding a, a very dense housing project next to rural residential where the smallest property is four and a half, so you're talking about devaluing property. You know, we can't, we can't just assume they.
That's a slightly different topic considering that land use is already zoned a specific way. We're talking about, this, this is specifically talking about and, about changing the zone.
Sure.
Or changing what could potentially look like in that zone. Again, I guess I, I'm a little fixated now on your comment earlier though of being presumptuous that this is an i, agenda item that is, that is set to pass, that would, that would tell me that you have some knowledge ahead of time going into something that this is a foreseeable thing that is absolutely going to happen.
No, you're being a conspiracy theorist. I was watching the, the meeting from last week where, you know, it seems like this is an issue that seems to have a consensus at the council. I know that they've read it based on what they've said at the council meeting and they want this to get pushed through. So I mean, if you don't wanna provide feedback other than you don't want it, that's, that's your prerogative. My feedback is, uh, add that the setback should be behind the house and then maybe attach some of the language from the accessory storage rules that we have. Just to make sure that it follows a similar compliance to detached structures. I think all of that is valid and, um, reasonable.
Well, to your comment though, please, uh, I would ask you to retract that I do not consider myself a conspiracy theorist. I'm just using the verbiage that you used, that it was presumptuous that this was something that was going to happen. And I already understand that they're looking for feedback, which is what I have been giving from my position.
I just wanna make sure you're not implying that I'm, you know, meeting with the entire council and asking them their decision because that's definitely not happening.
I'm giving a response to the comment that you had made.
All right, I retract my comment that you're acting as a conspiracy theorist.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Um, Aaron, what is the urgency on this item? You said before that this was an urgent item and that it needed to get done. Can you explain, and maybe I'm out of the loop, I haven't been here for the past few meetings. Can you tell me why this is so urgent that it, it, you know, it needs this attention?
Randy, I can't necessarily answer that, I know it was proposed, um, in May, we had it on the June agenda, it was tabled. We had it on the July agenda, it was tabled, Councilman Miller brought it up at the last city council meeting, asking that it be moved forward. So I don't know the urgency, I just know that, um, the request was to, to move it forward.
Okay, thank you.
I was at that meeting.
Yeah, no, I just, um, I mean, when, when, normally when you say that a, a, a meeting is urgent, it means that there's a deadline to meet and that, you know, maybe somebody who already has a storage container needs to get this done before they need to remove it. And that's kinda why I was curious if there was a particular reason that, that this needed to be pushed forward. So thank you, thank you for the information.
No justification provided other than it has been proposed and we've tabled it twice, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read it that way at all, Randy, that they, that, that it needed to be done for a personal reason or anything, but they, they had.
No, I just, again, I was, I, I was curious as to why this was such an urgent item. And then, you know, it doesn't sound like there is anything that, that we need to consider as a body, um, that we need to make sure that this gets passed because there's something down the line that needs to have the approval. So that was, that was the reason for my question. So, um, you were again talking earlier, in this body about, um, rural residential and different properties that this would affect and, and include. And I think you're making a huge mistake in thinking that the current zoning, um, is applicable to the entire city, um, to this date. So I know that I live in a rural residential on a half acre lot. It's not an acre and a half. Now, that was because these lots were put in before there was much work done on, you know, deciding, you know, what acreage was needed for, you know, certain uses. So therefore, according to what I'm reading here, I could just go ahead and, and dump a container in my backyard and, you know, to blazes with what my neighbors think. Um, and as long as I don't have graffiti on it, which makes me shake my head, the fact that you're including that as a restriction automatically tells me that this is an item that, that, you know, many people would consider to be a detriment to your property values rather than something that would be considered that you would like to have in your neighborhood. Um, and I, and I think, I think the, the, the point was well taken about the fact of how hard it is um, in dealing with code enforcement to get people to come into compliance. And I know that, that, again, I don't, I don't have the exact numbers, um, I was looking for them, Aaron, and I did not see them. But the penalty, I think for the first enforcement was something like seventy-five bucks.
Fifty.
Fifty bucks, I mean, I could spend that all day long, I, I think that, you know, the, the highest one is.
Two fifty.
I'm sorry, but it, it, it's less money for me to pay that penalty, um, than it would be to go ahead and correct the issue.
Until you have to get a lawyer, because you're in criminal court.
Right, well, if you even wanna bother to do that, I mean, you know, it, just let the court decide and then, then let them figure out how they're gonna take care of it. But my point being is, um, the idea of using storage containers for, for structural building, I, I think you could definitely make the argument that it does have its place. But the current iteration of what I'm seeing in front of me, um, it makes me, makes me feel like a cat in a room full of rocking chairs. Because, um, I'm just not seeing enough, I'm not seeing enough on, 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 on the restrictions to make sure that these are going to look appropriate for the type of city that, that, you know, we've been wanting to build for a long time. And again, I've. And again, I've gone online. I've seen houses built out of storage containers that I could never afford. They're gorgeous. They're beautiful. But their design restrictions as to how they actually present that through building code enforcement is way beyond what we're considering here. I mean, it just sounds to me you just wanna take a storage container, throw it in your backyard and start throwing stuff in it because you don't have any other place to put it. And I appreciate that. I do. I have the same problem. But there are currently um other avenues to go ahead and build an accessory structure that conforms with 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 our current ordinance that would take care of that problem. Now, I understand it's probably a little bit more expensive. But um as a homeowner who has the potential to have multiple different properties in my neighborhood with storage containers on it, I can tell you, there's no way I want this going on in my neighborhood. And I know that's a selfish thing to say, but that's kinda how I feel about it unless there was some very strict rules about how how they were placed, um what kind of pad you're gonna put them on, what kind of design elements you're gonna put on the outside of of the container to make it look maybe not like a a normal building, but at least a building that that isn't that you'd be proud of rather than, you know, a storage container that is has text or graffiti. I mean, I, you know, I'm I'm still I'm still trying to get over that particular part of the restriction because, I mean, to me, again, that's that's saying that that you expect it not to not to look very nice for the neighborhood.
Can I unpack one thing that you said, um the base?
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
So.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You're gonna you're gonna explain.
No, I'm just gonna ask you, you said you'd like to see it on some type of base, like a class five or a concrete base. Is that like a recommendation that you'd like to add to this?
I'm saying in its general iteration, there's no way that I could consider approving this amendment as proposed. Now, again, you know, I understand that you've been working on this for three months, but I I gotta tell you, I don't care if it takes you a year to iron out all the different, you know, things that needs to get taken care of this because I know that, you know, I don't want this happening in my neighborhood and and as a planning commissioner, I I don't wanna deal with all of the you know, things rolling downhill that are gonna hit us because, you know, somebody's not, you know, complying with with you know, um exactly with what's going on or that people are gonna complain because they put a container on their property and it doesn't look the way it should and how to get rid of it. And so I I'm having I'm having a really hard time with it. And I know some people have have mentioned too that, you know, they would like to do this to make a mother-in-law's house. And again, I would be sympathetic to that if you were gonna do that and make sure that the design elements on this storage container made it look more natural to the neighborhood than 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 just a a steel container.
Well, he he's specifying to to paint it uh to match the house or neutral color. Uh another point is, uh this has been kind of on the agenda for, um this is the third month. So we've had a lot of time to consider our our points on on our recommendations, so I I don't know if we should be saying, well, let's just wait longer so we can develop more because it's been on the agenda for three months to provide feedback on it.
Okay, so um again, I find that comment rather insulting. And the reason why I say that is because it shouldn't matter how long it's been on the agenda. It's still not to the point where I'm willing to support it as is. And um I don't think that 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 position is not understa- you know, not understandable because, again, if 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 the current amendment doesn't doesn't define everything the way that I I think is gonna be needed in order to make sure that it's not gonna cause us issues in the future or even that my neighbors aren't gonna come and complain because somebody's putting storage containers in their backyard, I don't wanna hear it. So
Actually, we haven't had three months, three different months to consider. This is our first time we've actually discussed it. It's been on our agenda three times. But it's been tabled, so we haven't really looked at this. Unless people have been looking at it on their own, but our meetings have gone really late. So now we're coming to terms of what this implies and what it means. So I I don't know that the time element, the time element is relative to this meeting now where we're actually discussing it. Not to the other times because it isn't a time sensitive issue. It's just somebody wants to see this happen and we're now looking at it and we're considering it more carefully.
And Glenn, if I could, there is a little bit of a time element here because as council is directed, it falls into that six, Aaron corrected me from wrong, the sixty days. No?
Actually, it does not. Um when it was initially, well, I can't say that. Um when it was initially brought forward, uh if I remember right, I was at the meeting, there was no formal proposal. The formal proposal came afterwards and then we actually got a formal amendment after that. So technically, we would have to look back at the clock to see when that sixty day window would start, but yes, there there is a little bit of a time element.
That that was the way I interpreted it based on how it was presented to us is that that was there. But the fact that they have it on their agenda item and holding public hearing for next Monday, and again, our role tonight is again to provide feedback so that they have that feedback for their final, what seemingly it may be their decision on that on Monday if they so choose to do so.
You can also, as a body, make a uh approval or a denial as well. The the guidance, if I remember right though, was uh they were looking for some constructive feedback and input to help them make a decision. So this is your opportunity to provide the feedback, if you will.
And I and I like to think the majority of us have done.
Yeah, yes.
I have an idea about um what might work, which is to allow for railroad cars or boxcars. I'm not quite sure if a boxcar is what I'm imagining or not, but or storage containers that are treated with materials so they do not appear as storage containers but as some that have an aesthetic like a shed or something architectural.
Are you referencing something similar to the?
The one that came before us.
The one that came before us, but again, that was no, I I'm gonna make sure I say this correctly. It was made very clear at that time that what they were asking for based on the on what they were asking for, that this was not a storage container and that this was now very specifically an accessory structure based on the modifications to that item. So we cannot consider that an ex- and a an accessory storage container because it it had been made into an accessory structure. Think I'm saying that correctly based on the way that meeting had went because every time I mentioned that it was a storage container, I was corrected very quickly by the homeowner that this was no longer that and it is an accessory structure, which is why I'm remembering it the way I am.
So Aaron, would would I mean, can can someone use a storage container to build a structure and basically use it as a frame?
I suppose that would make it not a uh
Storage container and it would become a structure and then they're probably gonna fall into code.
Based on our adopted state statute or the state building code, I don't believe a steel corrugated storage container would be considered a habitable structure to building code standards. The detached accessory structure standards are pretty open, if you will, based on your city's adoption to what might be allowable. So we we've adopted building code, uh the state level of building code for the city of East Bethel. So if there's a change in building code that allows these to be considered a structure, we would need to look into that to make sure that that is happening. I do know that there are other cities that have outlawed or prohibited storage containers and a lot of the um storage container homes that you see are built in townships or out in the county where there are very limited building code requirements. And that allows them to get around state building code, but I would have to look into some specifics on that to ensure that that's in alignment with our code and the state building code.
Cause I think I think that I could probably get behind if if that was the case because you're not you're not just throwing a container on your property. You're you're actually building a building and using that container structure to help define the building.
But if I may, Randy, that in fact goes well beyond what we're talking about today.
No, I understand that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I'm just, well, I because I realize that I was I was rather forceful in my comments and and I stand by them, but, you know, again, if 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 you're I'm not totally opposed to the idea of using storage containers if they conform to the building codes that that we're talking about.
Because at that point, it would no longer be a container. It would be a detached accessory structure, which is what has been approved.
Well, to me, it's still a storage container that you're you're building around, but yeah.
But that goes back to the precedent I mentioned, you know, a year plus ago when this came came before us on someone else.
Well, but Aaron says that we can't do that right now anyway because according to
Building.
The city wouldn't conform with the state's building codes, right?
Yeah, anything over two hundred square feet would have to have a building plan approved, which is the adoption of the state building code. So without some further research, I can't specifically answer if building code has been altered to allow storage containers. I do know that the cities of Cambridge and Iyamie do not allow them for residential purposes or for habitable purposes. But the one that was featured in the local newspaper was actually in the township, so therefore they were allowed to be able to use a cutting torch and cut that apart and weld it together and structurally make it into a
Something else.
Something that they could live in. So I I do know that, you know, there are city code that would have to be researched. Whether anything over two hundred square feet in the city of East Bethel probably wouldn't be, wouldn't meet building code.
Yes. But again, even that would go beyond the initial intent from what we're hearing from committee member Reader regarding that this is a more affordable storage option than what is currently available, so.
So I just for for a little follow-up for you guys. Myself and Administrator Davis have talked about this and we're not opposed to allowing storage containers as storage options in the rural residential and or agricultural um zone districts of the city. Now, a tax classification of agricultural, but you might be a different residential zone is a different zoning classification. So I don't wanna muddy the water too much, but you might be paying agricultural taxes on land, but you're in a residential zone. So.
I I'd like to just add another recommendation that if somebody does put a container that it's on a class five minimum pad so that there's some grading done. That way that prevents washout or any type of erosion. And I also I also think that con- consideration for property owners similar to Commissioner Johnson's uh property probably should be in consideration. So if there's a way to add that, so if an agricultural or a, you know, agricultural purpose property has that, that maybe they're included. I I can't imagine there's too many small properties like that exist in an A format like that.
Might be more than you think.
Yeah.
Actually. I I can't give you a definite answer on that. The the trouble we would run into is if you approve that for someone with a classification like that, but yet we have a planned unit development that happens to be like Viking Preserve, if you will, and those are very tiny lots, but obviously they're zoned uh in a PUD in some form, but yet they might have one or two in there that aren't built yet that might still be classified for tax purposes as agricultural. So you wanna be very careful. And that was my staff recommendation to look at only the general regulations for detached accessory structure as a baseline for the placement, the regulation, the exterior, the, so anything over two hundred square feet, we would require some form of either cement pad, wood skids, class five gravel, uh anything under two hundred square feet, we don't require those because it's not a building permit. So it's some of that, um re- my reasoning for asking or telling you to consider that is because that would help answer some of these more vague statutory requirements. That would give us something in black and white to say, okay, your storage container is three hundred and twenty square feet. It should be on a base of some sort, but you have it placed in the swamp in your backyard. Like um we need, you know, we need, so we need something. And that was my recommendation uh in order to give us something in black and white that we can look at in in uh, we can certainly work with a proposal. I just prefer something a little more black and white. And I think a lot of our residents, when they ask where they could put their storage container, might appreciate the fact that it says it's gotta be twenty-five feet from the lot line. It's gotta be you know, on a class five surface. It's gotta be.
It's regulated to the appropriate square footage.
They might like that better than just a generic.
More than two separate buildings.
Would it be possible to add this into the detached accessory structure but create a subsection for this that applies for this? But it expressly calls out storage containers separately?
Well, anything's possible.
I'm I'm trying to work with everybody.
Easier to reference the general regulations of the detached accessory structure in subdivision two of the amended proposal versus calling out the individual comply with setback requirements, comply with other applicable ordinances, violation result in fines or penalties. It may be easier just to say, you know, accessory storage containers should meet all of the general regulations of a detached accessory structure as defined in section fourteen. I mean, that may be easier than trying to redefine detached accessory structures to include a storage container. It may be easier to just go the other way. There's a thousand ways to skin a cat. Just depends on how much time and effort you wanna put into it.
Back to that point I had about dressing it up so it doesn't look like a storage container. If one put um beams across the roof of it and hung facade material, why is that suddenly a detached structure rather than still a storage container, other than aesthetically?
I mean, hypothetically, we we um classify lean-tos over two hundred square feet as detached accessory structures. So that's just post and beam frame leaning against the side of a building. So we include those in the I didn't write the code. I didn't write the definition. That's just what it is. So my assumption would be that if you framed over the top of a detached accessory structure more than two hundred square feet, then it should be in compliance with, or a, an accessory structure. It should be in compliance with the building code because it's more than two hundred square feet, based on code language. But this is why ordinance revisions are so much fun, you guys.
Just when I think I'm like, okay, I feel one way and then it's like.
Cause if I remember right, um and you can remind me if I'm mistaken, the storage container that was converted to make it look like a
To be, no, not to look like, but to become an accessory structure.
They were required to get a building permit, I believe, because it was over two hundred square feet and they were roofing it and putting shingles on and building walls to to hide the thing.
They 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 installed trusses, roof, changed the look completely.
So at that point, you're making them build a storage.
Build a barn.
Building an accessory, storage contain- or accessory storage building at that point, so.
Which is why I referenced that because, again, that is not a storage container. He modified what that was to become a detached accessory structure. That was not just putting it out there and painting it.
So again, uh city staff are not opposed to storage containers, rural residential or agricultural. We just would like a little bit more black and white regulation in terms of. a little bit more black and white regulation in terms of what we can and can't tell folks when it comes to placement, color, location, size, number.
But again, and because of that previous issue, and again, as I go back to what I said in the beginning of, I was opposed to container to begin with, but even in the end, I still voted to approve it after it was fully deemed that it was no longer a storage container and that it was a detached accessory structure due to the modifications made to it. But again, I warranted caution against precedent and what bring in the future. But again, we made that individual jump through a number of things to make it compliant, which is he was willing to do. Versus you have to go ahead and put it in your backyard and paint it and call it a day.
And I'm not proposing that under uh generally regulation two D that we require that the exterior surface be brick, block, stone, like I don't, I'm not proposing any of that, I'm just saying as a basis for placement and cosmetic things, this would be a good place to start if you wanted to look at some sort of regulatory model for placement, if you will, and or stack.
Yeah, I agree. I so my, I guess my three feedback items are um the setback behind the house, the class five minimum um pad. And then, as you're saying, um to match some of the language in the detached accessory structures, just to make sure it's kind of conforming within those setback and aesthetic requirements.
Well, the the setback behind the house would be considered in the accessory structure um regulations anyways, wouldn't it?
Yeah, if we if we match those regulations.
It's a little bit redundant.
Sure.
It we, it would tell us where it could be placed, which includes the rear yard essentially, um based on what's in there. You know, rural residential, the rear yard setback is twenty-five feet, so it would have to be twenty-five feet off of a rear property line, twenty-five feet off of a side property line. We would want it to be three feet from any well, we would wanna be twenty feet from any drain field, we would wanna be ten feet from any separate tanks.
Couldn't have two other outdoor or.
It couldn't exceed thirty feet in height, it couldn't be stacked, like, so there are a lot of considerations, if you will. You can make it as complicated or as simple as you'd like.
If I may share my feedback and then I'm done with this. In um, kind of in line with what Joe was saying, something either in the backyard or out of sight of the general public, which is gonna be difficult to achieve, so you're weeding out.
So but what if a neighbor sees it then?
Right.
That's still inside, inside, again, if I, I can see the backyard of my neighbor from my house.
So that's where it becomes more difficult, so we're allowing the provision while setting a high bar. I'm, you know.
I just don't know how you control that though, that's that's the difficult part. Again, all of a sudden I cut down a tree in my backyard and now I can see yours is there, now you're no longer compliant.
So.
You were, now you're not.
As far as controlling it, you've already said it, we can't at this point, we're already having issue, so. Maybe some give. An additional thing, add a minimum acreage to this of some sort. I don't know what it would be, I'm not the guy to ask, but um like Randy, you were saying you've got a half acre lot and you fall into the R one, R two. You could just throw one out there, well. And then you had mentioned something about permitting that for detached, getting a detached accessory structure would require permitting.
Over two hundred square feet.
Okay, so, you know, two of these um twenty-foot containers or forty-foot breaches that. So, you know, maybe even just consider one requiring a permit, anything, you know. I'm I'm not, I'm not pleased, but I'm, when I hear Joe say what he has about it seems like it's already gonna go through and with the whole history we've got here, it seems inevitable, and if we're gonna have any control in any way.
Well, I don't think we do have any control.
Exactly.
No, but by by opening it up though, that's when you, again, you open it up. And that's my argument to it, I understand, and I'm not trying to be the person to continue to sway, but when I hear a comment that's trying to say that it's in favor due to X, Y, and Z, and I can pose the opposing view, I'm going to, and something like that, because I don't want it out there that, oh, well, as long as we did this, it's just fine. But to say, okay, out of sight, but again, what is out of sight? It's it's hard to regulate that stuff, so I just, again, don't get me wrong, I wanna let people do what they wanna do too, but at the same point, I'm not gonna do it at the detriment of of the city as as a whole either, just for for some.
Right.
You know, again, we, that's always been a consideration of mine when it comes to this is, what are we doing as a precedent? I've mentioned that just about every meeting, what it, you know, what it could potentially do. So again, if I give you pushback, again, it's because it's, yeah, my opinion on it, I do feel strongly about it. This is not something I wanna, I wanna see, but again, that's, I'm one person, I'm one opinion.
Okay, well, I've been pretty quiet, and I I think I've been pretty clear too, is that that I am in favor of it, especially for agricultural um purposed um properties. I would really like to see it have to be conforming to the accessory sta- structure regulations.
So Sharon, um you 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 talk about, you know, for a purpose simi- similar to your own, that this would be something that you would want to have the option to do, right? I mean, would you be opposed to increasing the acreage that it would require in order to get this? Or specifying that, you know, a farm that is, you know, being used for agricultural would have an exception?
Oh, it's again, the other way, so we, are you saying that there's a minimum number of acres?
Currently, there there is no minimum, but I'm, what I'm asking is, is you know, I mean, I can understand where where, you know, you're you're doing all of this farming and you've got, you know, a lot of equipment slash
Well, and and that's.
Things that you wanna store, right?
Exactly, well, and that's it, I mean, I see it as equipment.
Right.
Not as storage.
But again, this isn't a half an acre or an acre we're talking about.
Right.
I mean, you own quite a bit more than that, so what I'm asking is, I mean, would you, would you be opposed to a minimum acreage requirement in order to put on a storage container with, without having some of these design features that we were talking about, which is changing the look of the container to make it look like everything else in the neighborhood?
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed, but are you thinking like five acres or two acres?
Twenty.
I was thinking minimum of ten was kind of what I, where I was going with it because um again, I, you know, my neighbors all are, you know, across the street from me are five acres. And um, yeah, they could maybe put it towards the back of their property where I probably wouldn't see it. But again, I I just, that doesn't mean that the neighbor behind them isn't gonna be able to see it, right? And which is similar to what Tanner was talking about. And maybe they wouldn't care, I don't know, I'm not speaking to that, but again, um I mean, if 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 you're hell bent on on going forward with this plan, um to me, I I think that there should be a minimum that you should do in order to be able to use this particular uh solution rather than just building your own accessory structure on these smaller properties where it really will affect the look of the neighborhood. So I mean, again, I'm, the neighborhood I'm I'm looking at, I mean, we've got, you know, maybe twenty, twenty-five houses, they can all see into each other's backyards. I mean, if you put a storage container back there, everybody's gonna see it. And right now, it's this um idyllic scenery in my backyard with a creek running through it where, you know, I mean, you could have a golf course in the backyard, it's that nice. Somebody puts a storage container back there, it would really ruin the aesthetic of of the idea of this being a rural um community that talks about how much we appreciate wildlife and and, you know, having, you know, making it, you know, seem really nice where, you know, you're kind of hearing the birds call and everything else. To me, I've, I I just, it feels like it's not aesthetically, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like it matches for me, wh- when I think of East Bethel. So I was just curious if if, you know, again, you you would think that if you're gonna go along with this, along along with this, that you would increase the acreage to the point where at least if 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 you do it, you're minimize, you're minimizing the risk of complaints.
Right, I would not oppose that at all, but I guess, you know, bottom line is I I don't, I I do think that they have their places.
I don't have any more feedback to go.
Mr. Chair, is there a motion?
That's where I was going with this.
Do we need one? So we, do they just need our discussion?
They will need a, some form of recommendation.
We need to give either a proposed, let's see here, just to make sure I'm reading this appropriately. They are looking for a formal recommendation of approval, denial, or an amended for consideration for the written report, so at this time, if there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion of approval, denial, or an amended consideration.
I would like to make a motion for the recommendation of providing uh the class five minimum base that we discussed, and then adding the setback requirements that are in the detached accessory structure language of our ordinance, of our current existing ordinance.
Only that portion of it? I'm just wanna make sure you're, I'm clear on what you're motioning, is it just the setback requirements only of the detached accessory structure or the entire detached accessory structure? Just for point of clarification.
Let me, let me take back my motion and then start over. Just so we're clear on what we've discussed, we discussed adding the pad, the class five pad, correct? And then, um Sharon, you you've added the detached accessory requirements for the setbacks? Was there anything else to add to that?
No.
No, am I missing anything that we've discussed?
Minimum acreage.
Well, he doesn't have to put that in his motion.
He can put whatever he wants to do, his motion, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on what he's saying versus the setbacks versus the entire ordinance, which is what's happening.
Because all you're making a motion for is the class five and the design requirements, you're not actually making a motion for the proposed amendment, so you you wanna include the proposed amendment and include the class five slash design elements, does that make sense?
So I'll make a motion to approve the recommended amendment to the ordinance, adding class five minimum base, and then adding the setback requirements from the detached accessory structure language in our ordinance. And then adding a minimum of one and a half acres for rural lots, just to ensure that there's no too too compact, as Randy said, he's got a half acre lot, which is non-conforming rural residential, but um I think the whole idea of the, um, this is becoming a long motion.
I know, it it is difficult because one and a half is is small, I think. I mean, if I were gonna put a a minimum, I would put, I would put five, sounds like Randy would like ten or seventy-two.
You can always amend the motion after he's done.
Okay.
So with a minimum of one, one and a half acres for rural residential, that's my motion.
So for clarification, cause I'll be trying to write this up.
Okay.
I wanna be sure that I have your intent. The existing amendment proposal says that properties under four acres are allowed a certain size. You wanna set a minimum so that if a lot is less than an acre and a half, it can't have any containers? Is that what your proposal is?
I'm just trying to tie in all the feedback that's coming in, um so yes, that's the proposal.
Okay.
A minimum of one and a half up to four is gonna be up to three hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay.
So again, I'll restate the motion.
Can we make a motion with all of the recommendations we've made to you and just blanket the whole thing so we don't have to?
Unfortunately not.
No, I gotta state it all bit by bit?
No, it'd be the motion he had, currently we have a motion on the floor. There would need to be a second for anything to continue further, or the motion would die, and there would have to be a new motion made. Or a motion, a second, further discussion, and then approval or denial of said motion.
Motion, and our Mr. Parliamentarian there.
Am I correct in that, Randy?
Let us know, we missed you, Randy.
Sounded good to me.
I'll take the win there. So there is a motion on the floor currently.
Yes, currently there's a motion on the floor and there needs to be a second.
There would need to be a second for the way that the motion is currently read.
And you're saying I can second it with my own recommendation, is that what you're getting at? Nope?
I will second the recommend- or the motion.
You are seconding, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion before us, including said language, if someone has something further to say and offer an amended mo- motion.
Yes, please.
Am I correct in that, Randy? Thank you.
So this is not including anything regarding permitting the structure? The storage container?
There is no language for permits in here, no, there is not.
For me, the motion fails for my approval on the uh minimum requirement for acreage. It's it's too small. I don't, I don't see how something one and a half just could be two acres, I don't see how you'd be able to conceal that from the neighborhood. And it, but these seem appropriate to me for larger properties where you can do that. So that's where I'm at on that.
So was that an amendment or was that just a comment?
This is a discussion.
That was a discussion item that he is in opposition to said motion.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
Yep, it's a comment of being in opposition to the current motion.
Okay.
Gabriel, did you have something you wanted to to add in there? I don't think you had an opportunity. And again, this is discussion on the existing motion that's currently out there.
Right, um I just wanna make sure that, you know, all of the feedback I've given as well, you know, such as out of sight, however that might be put on paper. You know, if that means a twelve-foot fence, again, I want to make sure that we're raising a bar to a good standard. As well as some sort of screening process, whether that means it has to be permitted for even just one, not up to two hundred square feet.
But then you'd have just point of argument that you would have to have, well, someone would have to draft some kind of language for that as well, and then there would have to be a regulation to that as well, and that again takes it beyond what the scope of what the intent is here. But that's, again, i- in regards to the specific motion, I would all, I, I'm obviously opposed to this in general. I'm even more opposed to this exact motion, especially specifically keeping out the staff recommendation of of including the accessory structure language, if that was staff's recommendation. But again, I'm in opposition to all of this to begin with, so.
I have a question, um if if we do deny it, will they still receive the feedback in the packet? Okay, sure, cause I just wanna make sure that if it does get denied, they still receive the feedback so they can consider it.
If this is denied, another motion could, or if it was denied and didn't pass, or not an amendment and didn't pass, there would still be an opportunity for someone to make an additional amendment and, or, sorry, an additional motion, and then that would need to be seconded and continued discussion on said item. But we do need to have, as requested by city council, that we do have a formal, which by motion would be a recommendation of approval, total denial, or amendment.
That's not a council request, that's an ordinance.
Sorry, ordinance requirement, sorry, thank you.
Okay, well, just uh, speed it up, I I'm gonna make a motion to call a question.
You don't have to make a motion, you just can call a question.
I'll, I'll like to call a question.
Have the opportunity to provide their feedback and discussion, so.
And then I don't ever, I don't believe everyone has yet, if less there's.
They just have to have had an opportunity.
Yes.
A point of order, Mr. Chair?
Please, Mr. President.
I hate to do this, but um to call the question is a motion, and it has to be dealt with immediately. The requirements for uh that are that you need to have a sixty-six point six percent in favor vote from the entire body in order for the call to question to be. in favor vote from the entire body in order for the call to question to be gone forward. So we need to treat this like a regular motion and have a vote on whether or not to call the questions.
Okay, so the question has been called, we need to have a vote, correct, if, to call the question?
Yes.
So all those in favor of calling the question and going to a vote, say aye.
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 Oh, I, I was raising my hand because I don't know what call the question means.
Calling the question means that we're gonna go, we're gonna bypass continued discussion and go right to
Voting.
The voting, yea, your name, on the motion.
I'll go aye with that.
So you are in favor of going directly to the vote and
Yes.
ending the discussion.
Was it unanimous then, if that's the case, for my record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, question has been called, all those in favor of the motion as it currently reads on the floor from Joe, seconded, say aye.
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 So that was three. All those opposed?
Aye.
That's four. Motion fails. This time I would entertain any other motions for approval, denial, or other modification.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment as delivered by Councilman Miller.
Is there a second? Hearing none, that motion fails.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Can't write that fast, gentlemen and ladies.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment request by Councilman Miller, adding the setback, or adding the accessory, detached accessory structure ordinance considerations.
Regula, general regula, general regulations?
Right. Adding the minimum class five base. Adding there be a minimum of five acres for the storage containers to be acceptable. And exempting from those requirements, the use of a train car or the applying of facade, facade material to disguise the appearance of the storage container.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion as read?
I'll be voting no, I think it's too restrictive, I think two acres is probably the smallest we should go, but that's, that's my feedback. And the reason I'll be voting no on this.
Any other discussion? Hearing none then, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 That's three. Gabriel Glenn, here. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, motion is denied.
Did, did Randy, did you say aye to that?
I, I denied.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So again, at this time, I would still entertain a motion for approval, denial, or changes.
So I would remind the Planning Commission that if you feel passionate about one version or another version some other avenue, uh, there will be a public hearing next Monday night in front of the City Council, if you're compelled to show up that and speak. I, I'm pretty sure each, uh, council member would also be willing to look at an email and/or a phone call from you two if you're passionate about one version or another, or one restriction, or lack of restriction, or however you wanna go with. We come to an impasse or something tonight, we could be here till midnight if that's the case, so.
Well, and again, I typically, as the current commi, uh, Chair of this commission, I do try to at great lengths not be the one to make motion and to give that an opportunity for everyone. At this time though, I will exercise my right, I, and I will make a motion to deny the amendment.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion on the denial of the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of denying the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
That's three. All those opposed?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
For what reason an abstention is, uh, considering a, a yes vote, Randy?
No.
For what reason would you abstain?
I was the one that abst, oh.
Yep, I.
Why did I abstain? Because I don't, I think we should be able to craft something that works rather than flat denial.
So that would be a denial.
You're in favor of denying the motion of denial.
Correct.
Because you feel that there's another way to, another path to get there.
Yes, but I'm entirely convinced that we will arrive at that, so I, I didn't wanna like if we deny, then we're done with this, right?
Well, that would be the, well, well, this body would be done discussing it because we denied the motion because we couldn't come to any other agreements, and that it would still go before City Council after the public hearing next week, and they would, they would have our feedback from this, including the denial and any other discussion, if they so chose to come back and watch that meeting.
So, so if I may, you do not want to approve the denial because you feel that we should be coming up with some sort of, um...
I'd like to give them something to work with other than a denial of their recommendation.
Then vote in favor, then vote not in favor of the motion, the motion is to deny the proposal.
Because you, because what you're saying is, you would like us to continue the conversation in order to come up with some kind of middle ground in order to make it work.
Right.
So if we could without putting the word in your mouth, is you would be a yea to the denial of the motion of denial, it's a double negative.
You confused me, but I think, I think so.
The motion was to deny, the sec, there was a second, the vote was taken. There were three in favor of the motion.
To deny.
To deny. To deny, there were three in favor, or, or not in favor, and then you abstained, so we're sitting at a three-three tie on the motion to deny. So if you vote.
Now I'm kinda interested in what happens if we leave it at that.
We're here till midnight?
I'm, I'm trying to remember parliament, parliamentary procedure. I'm guessing an abstention votes the affirmative from my recollection.
Which would be the denial of the denial, and we're back to discussion.
Correct.
To entertain any other motion.
Well, that works for me.
So we have an abstention that falls into the category of yea to deny the denial. And therefore my motion dies, and we're back to discussion and open to a motion on the, on the item.
Let's recap, so we're all on the same page.
Sure.
Your motion was to deny the proposed amendment in its current form.
Yes.
Okay. It was seconded by Randy to deny the motion, the amendment in its current form.
Yes.
Three of you voted in favor of the denial.
Yes.
Three of you voted in opposition of the denial.
Correct.
An abstention, from my recollection, is a vote, is a yes vote.
Yes to deny, or yes to deny the denial?
To deny.
Okay, so the first half.
So that, then this would pass, the denial would pass four to three essentially on a three to three tie with an abstention. The, the abstention is a vote of affirmative.
Because it's denial.
Because it's.
Yeah.
So it would be denied on the current format.
I think you're making it more complicated than you need to, I mean.
Well, that changes the outcome then from what I was expecting.
The, the point, the point being is that the vote was a tie.
Right.
Which means that it didn't pass.
Right.
It's in your best interest to vote.
We're back to square one where he's entertaining another motion.
My abstention was weighing one way or the other in this, which.
You're abstaining, like you weren't even here, so then it's three V three.
We need to clarify what he wants to do, if he's, if he's on a motion here.
Would you like to continue, Glenn, if I may, would you like to continue the discussion, or would you like to send forth a denial to the City Council of this, the way it reads currently?
Yeah, so in that, be, in that case, I would just like to vote to deny the denial.
Okay, so my motion dies.
Dies.
In, in a four, or in a three, four
Vote.
Vote, thank you.
To try to speed this up, I'd like to make a motion, um, just considering that the City Council can either go along with the recommendation or not. Correct, they don't have to go along with the recommendation, but, but I'm just gonna go along to get along.
With any other decision that the Planning Commission, the Council ultimately can decide.
My recommendation is to adopt the amended ordinance submitted by Councilman Miller to add the subbase of class five minimum to include the detached structure setback requirements that are already contained within our ordinance. And then to be amenable and set a minimum requirement of five acres.
So containers can't be placed on any lot smaller than five acres?
Correct.
And only has the setbacks from the accessory structure?
I'm not worried about that, I just wanna make sure we're clear on.
Five acres, I think.
So fi, so four point nine nine is not allowed.
Again, I'm, I want to, I wanna get this sent over to the council, and if they decide to use it entirely, in the entirety or not, it's up to them. Just to make sure that they get this, um, I will motion that it's five acres.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I will second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Aaron, um... This does not include any design elements for the, for the structure itself, correct?
Other than the paint. Other than the paint and graffiti.
No texture, graffiti, neutral color matching aesthetics of the primary structure. The neutral colors include white, beige, gray, or similar earth tone.
Yep.
Twelve feet in height, and not stacked, those are the, um, general provisions.
So that doesn't account for any screening or any?
Nope. And to be fair, this is why I continue to point out only using the setbacks from the accessory structure guideline, or ordinances that, that's specific to just the setbacks, none of the other standards in that. And I'm just making that for point of clarification, so it doesn't get misconstrued later, but again, as Joe had also pointed out as well, again, City Council can choose to do what they choose to do, we are an advisory board at that, and what we advise as a majority is what goes to them.
So Aaron, is that, is that conforming then with a normal advi, uh, accessory structure? I mean, are there increased, um, design standards for a regular accessory structure?
Yes, there are.
Beyond this?
Yes.
Uh, can I just get a second to my motion?
It's already been seconded, yeah.
Yep.
Um, I would like to make an amendment to the current motion, and I would like to add that the, um... the design aesthetics have to match the current, um... the current design standards for, uh, uh, the current accessory structures. Does that, does that make sense?
It does, however, our design standards for a detached accessory structure require a minimum of a twelve inch overhang and a certain pitch for a roof. So now you're complicating things even more.
Yeah.
What was required, but essentially turning it into the last issue we had of making somebody turn it in, turn the box into.
I, I, I still stand by my motion.
Okay.
Yep.
So there is, in the midst of discussion, there is now an amendment to the motion, is there a second to Randy's amendment?
I'll second, we're just providing feedback, and if this is something that we wanna share with them, then I'll, I'll second his motion.
Not necessarily. There is a motion and a second, all in favor to approving only the amendment to the motion while still keeping the discussion open because we have not voted on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The amendment to the motion passes, to continue discussion.
Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous to amend the motion to continue the dis, to Randy's point to the motion.
Thank you.
And now we're back to discussion of the motion with the amendment. And I guess I would again, obviously I'm still not going to be in favor of the motion, but.
I'll call the que, question.
Voting on calling the question then, all those in favor to ca, call the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous to call the question, all those in favor of the motion with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So four to three.
So that passes.
Passes. Our recommend, or, well, the four-three motion goes through City Council. Moving on to item five. Concept plan for Viking Meadows, amended concept plan at one seven eight eight Viking Boulevard Northeast.
Give me one second to transition.
Please, take your time.
Pick your, where I'm at here, Mr. Chair.
Is everybody comfortable, does anyone need a ticket bathroom break? I don't, but I just don't want anyone floating out of here.
Can I? No. All right. On June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the City Council and the Planning Commission held a joint special meeting where Capstone Homes Incorporated presented a concept plan for a mixed-use plan unit development, residential development of the redevelopment, excuse me, of the Viking Meadows Golf Course located at one seven eight eight Viking Boulevard Northeast. At the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, the public hearing was held and feedback was provided to the developer on the proposed concept plan. At the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting, the concept plan proposal was presented to the City Council for feedback. On August sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, the developer submitted a revised concept plan for the proposed plan unit development, which is attached for your review as attachment number three. The property is located on approximately a hundred and twenty-nine acres of land which spans across zoning classifications of mixed-use and single-family residential. The proposal shows that of the ninety-five acres of which are develop, developable, uh, sixty-nine acres will contain a proposed two hundred and fifty-two lots. In addition to the amended proposal, contains sixty acres of open space, which also include an eight point five acre park and recreation space. The revised concept plan removes the rural residential thirty-acre parcel south of a hundred and eighty-ninth Avenue Northeast from the original plan, which resulted in a decrease of ninety-eight lots. According to City Code, section fifty-six, a plan unit development is a requirement of the mixed-use district of the city. As you know from previous discussions, the larger, um, portion of this proposed development is in the mixed-use, so that will be a requirement. Uh, as part of the preliminary plan review, uh, staff has offered the following comments. Uh, ingress and egress to the development will be accessible from two locations, Viking Boulevard Northeast and Sand Hill Parkway Northeast. The original proposal contained a potential connection at a hundred and eighty-ninth Avenue Northeast. This is still being requested to be configured as an emergency-only access point. The city engineer, the public works manager, and city staff are working in conjunction with the Anoka County Highway Department to evaluate overall traffic considerations of the area in response to concerns expressed during the first concept plan proposal. A traffic study will still be required as part of the environmental assessment. Under open space, a primary function for a plan unit development is to encourage development that preserves and enhances the natural characteristics and valuable natural resources of the site and not force intense development that uses all proportions of a given site to arrive at a minimum intensity or density allowed. Capstone has pro, pro, proposed over sixty acres of open green space, which includes an eight point five acre community park and recreation space with walking trails and unique landscape buffers to adjacent properties. The park is an increase from the original one-acre park proposal, uh, as, as shown in attachment four. Uh, streets and cul-de-sacs, along with utilities, shall be constructed in compliance with City Code, uh, which require that streets shall provide for future connections to adjoining undivided. Uh, which require that streets shall provide for future connections to adjoining undivided, uh, land. Staff recommends that streets be maintained by public, uh, city streets, um, and be maintained, uh, through the development by, uh, public work staff. The plan, uh, under housing, the amended plan consists of two hundred and fifty two new single family homes. Which is a reduction from the original proposal of three hundred and fifty homes. A combination of fifty foot lots, seventy foot lots, and eighty foot lots are now proposed as opposed to the forty fives and sixty fives that were included in the original proposal. City services, the plan indicates that the new, each new single family home will connect to sewer and water as the entire development will be contained within the metropolitan urban service area. Under density, the plan consists of an overall density for the proposed developable land that is under three units per acre. Which is the citywide density standard based on the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan for all properties located in the MUSA. Uh, the Parks Commission has reviewed the concept plan at the August eighth meeting. Uh, there was conversation and discussion and, and it seems agreeable that the Parks Commission would accept a hundred and fifty dollar per lot fee. And the eight point one acre park land with the developer requesting the cash. Um, be used for improvements on the park located within the subdivision. Uh, staff is requesting the planning commission discuss the amendment concept plan, the amended concept plan, excuse me. For the mixed use plan unit development and formally make a recommendation of approval or denial to the East Bethel City Council. The developer is here, I think he would like to, or representatives from the development, developer are here and would like to make some comments and or answer any questions you guys might have prior to your decision tonight. If you'd like to come up and. Speak, please do, before we discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners, thank you staff, uh, in light of time, I'll be very brief.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience tonight.
So, uh, we've had lots of discussions as, as Aaron alluded to over the last two months about the plan and what you see now is a, um, much more refined plan. And I just wanna jump right to the, to the chase, we took thirty acres off of this plan, uh, which was a lot of discussion from staff, from, from council as well as from, from the public. So that thirty acre parcel that is currently rural is no longer in our plan that we're presenting. So that is a, a reduction of actually fifty five lots that were originally intended there. The second thing that we've done, uh, as, as Aaron alluded to, is the park has increased in size. Originally, we had a one acre park proposed with our original concept. After hearing the feedback, that's increased now to eight point one acres, which is a lot of active and passive play area with the trail system that winds all the way through, connects down to the lower section of the community. Ties into the sidewalks and brings people back around, so there's a lot more space for, uh, your park commission to work with and we had a good time in discussion with the park commissioners. Uh, and talking about how that fifteen hundred dollar fee, as well as giving land that's unique, most type of. Uh, what we understood is they would receive a fee or they would receive land, we're proposing both. And that gives, uh, a lot more opportunity and our hope is that the opportunity generates the ability to bring those dollars back for that park to be developed. So that park is larger and then the other thing is, in our original plan, we asked for some flexibility and it is gonna be under a PUD because it is a mixed use, uh, zoning area. So our flexibility request was smaller sized lots. So instead of that, this new plan actually just goes to your straight zoning. So you have R one and R two, which is permitted in mixed use. And then the other corridor, I'm just gonna step aside, this area here is currently zoned R one, this is all the mixed use. So we've moved to just R one, which is eighty foot lots in this lower portion, that's your current standard, so we're just meeting that, not asking for any flexibility in that. And then the main mixed use area, we're going under the R two standard. And the R two standard had a minimum sixty foot lot unless there's an HOA, which then allowed a lower sized lot, so we have a fifty foot lot that is HOA commentary maintained. So those are the changes that really, just giving you the quick overview of that we've done with the plan. And like I said, not looking for flexibility, we know we have to have a PUD, that's a part of the requirement for mixed use, but we're just going with just your standard zoning to make this thing simple. When you do the change from. Our sixty five foot lots in the R one and the R two areas, that's where the rest of the lots are lost, so the total. Um, total reduction is almost a hundred lots that are now removed from this overall plan for this area. So it's a big change, but, um, we're still, uh, pretty comfortable, I believe, with what's, what's presented here. Um, you'd get bigger lots, you get a little bit bigger, um, use of the space and, and we're just following your standards now, so. That other, uh, example does show you how much open space, I think this is the most unique element of this, I, I don't have another development where. Nearly fifty percent of the land that we're working on is left. And that's the case here, I think it's actually almost sixty acres out of, um, the hundred and fifty, hundred and fifteen acres that we, that we have or somewhere in there that's left as open space. So it's a substantial amount of open space, a lot of that's wetlands, but there's also ponds and other structures plus the park that we're, that we're, um, we're giving as well, so. So with that, I'm here for questions, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you for, for the hard work that you did in there, so.
Does that change the character of the houses then, now that you've had to reduce the number of housing going in, is it gonna increase the, the lot prices and the housing prices?
Absolutely, if you're going from a sixty five foot lot, uh, to an eighty foot lot, there's a, a definitely a big difference in what the overall look of that, that lot is, it does give some ability. It's still a ten foot setback, so you're still talking about a sixty foot lot. But there is the ability to look at maybe even a four car garage home, there's a lot of different things that we can do with that, so there is definitely a, a change in that, so. It does, it does add a premium on those larger lots, uh, we're still trying to keep also, uh, the, the detached single family product, our liberty product as, as an attainable product too. So it's important that we're still, we're not losing a portion of the market that was really important to the overall design and the development.
Why is the open space pushed all to one side and not throughout the entire development? If, if it was more in the center, with the houses focused on the open space, that might be more of a center of attention, more of a value add rather than a afterthought.
Can you go to the next piece? The wetlands, they're a hundred percent why that open space is the way it is. If you notice right in the center, these are all wetlands, here, here, down through here, this is a ditch. So the wetlands impacted our design significantly. If the wetlands weren't there, the wetland credits to impact those wetlands are very, very expensive. If the wetlands weren't there, we'd probably have a different design.
So the DNR and Army Corps won't allow you to improve the ditch as it exists?
There probably is going to actually be a requirement through our environmental assessment to clean that ditch to make sure that ditch is flowing properly. But we couldn't move or impact the ditch.
I guess my general feedback is, this is the mixed use area of our city, our city is vested very heavily in service road in front of it, in the water and sewer going into it. Um, the plan doesn't have any commercial area, the whole point of the mixed use district is to create a sustainable development. A walkable development, you know, as we're moving into the future with zero carbon and all these requirements that are coming down. This is not a sustainable community, it doesn't offer walking opportunities to local commercial, doesn't have commercial. Um, our mixed use requirement is twenty percent of a mixed use PUD should contain commercial. Seven point five percent high density, seventy two point five percent, uh, what we see here. Um. I, I would like to see some of that integrated, again, that's my feedback, but I don't really see it getting through the council without at least taking some of that into consideration because. We need the commercial in that area to pay for the street. I think it was three and a half, four million dollars to build that service road through other funds that we had and. To, to put all residential on that is probably not the best use of land. Additionally, um, with these ponds, I'll push to the side.
Mister, Mister Reader, if I may, can I respond to, to your comments, is that okay?
Yep.
I appreciate that, um, I just wanna make sure there's a quick clarification. The upper triangle of this, which is a part of this parcel, is, is not included in our plan and that is left as commercial, that's the area on Sand Hill Parkway, you can see a couple of parcels there that are left. For commercial, which is one of your comments there, so I just wanted to respond to that, and then also you had mentioned walkability. Um, if you notice, not only is there trails, but we also have sidewalk system through the entire development, so. You can walk anywhere within the community and be connected to Sand Hill Parkway, there's also a tie in to the new elevage, so there's an ability to walk from the community. Through the elevage to all the commercial lots that are, uh, this is all commercial through here as well, the quick trip, so there is walkability through the development and that is a part of the plan that we're presenting, so I just wanted to get a response.
Okay, so for clarification, about thirty nine acres of new pond digouts, what, what are you gonna do with the sand from those ponds?
That's a great question, um, if I get into the engineering a little bit, so there's elements of engineering where you have to make sure that the site is balanced for development. So there is going to be material coming out of those ponds, um, to help lift the development, so it's not in a flood plain. So that we have to make some of those adjustments, I know that's one component of it, but the other portion of those ponds, the ponds may change in their structure. They're there with our estimation of what stormwater requirements are going to be for the entire community. So that's what you see here is stormwater ponding throughout most of these areas, so that may change, it may go up, it may go down, it really depends upon final engineering as we go through it.
Will you be retaining any of the trees on the site? Or will those all be bulldozed similar to elevage?
No, we are not doing something similar, if you notice, as I mentioned, if you go back to the other slide. A lot of our open space areas are wetlands where a lot of the trees are on the development, if you actually, I don't have a, a slide that shows, but, um, these other areas down here were the wetlands, that's where you see most of this tree structure. Those are not gonna be touched. Most of the tree structure that is in there that's natural is a part of the wetland structures that will not be hit, the other areas are within the golf course, areas where we're able to save trees, we wanna do that. Especially on the north by Viking Boulevard, if you notice, there's an area up there that we've left as open space. There's a nice area up there that we wanna really enhance with the entrance, which would leave quite a few of the trees on that Viking Boulevard stretch. And can zoom in there, so, this area up here, that's all left is open space, up through there, there's obviously going to be some impacts. As you come into the, the community here, but some of these other areas are wetlands that are in the open spaces, those are all areas that we're not gonna be getting into too much, simply because of the wetland impacts and we don't wanna do that.
I, I reviewed the, the wetland map and only the ditches are considered wetland on that property, the Minnesota doing our wetland map?
No, that's not correct, we have actually quite a few wetlands here that, that are considered. Um. What's the classification for wetlands that, that have a much steeper cost for impact, I'm trying to remember the, the name of it. We've done a wetland study already on it and, and there's a lot that we're not going to be able to touch, so.
Are you pulling that up, Aaron?
I'm trying to get the wetland overlay that we have access to on the. Give me one second here.
Is that the hundred year flood zone?
The, the hatched area is the flood plain designation.
I'd be happy to take the FEMA off.
Take FEMA off?
Then you can see just the impactful.
There you go.
So you have ditches, you have some of these other little corridors that are poking out in here, we've identified some other ones that are actually up, uh, on the northern part of the border. If you go back to our original concept, which is what we're asking for your approval on, you can see where we've identified areas that we're, we're seeing wetlands that we're not gonna impact and that's more than what you're seeing currently even on that plan, so. Um, when. Sorry. Areas up here that are wetlands, up to the north, this wetland, the area down, down through the center where you saw that ditch here, the ditch that came over, we've expanded that up even further. There's more area through here that we were questioning on, wetlands down in the lower section here, so there's, there's quite a bit in there that we're, we're really stepping away from, that we were. As you saw in our original presentation, we do have a mindset of preservation and caring for the community we're building, we really do care about it, so that's, that's important to us and we're trying to make sure that we give that its, its effort here with the design.
What is your plan for the thirty acres that you don't have on this?
On, outside of our scope tonight, just so you know.
Well, not necessarily.
But it is.
If this is just a delayed. Thing where you're gonna add those homes later, that.
We're not, we actually are not even presenting a plan with that planned in it, it's a, a preliminary plat- concept is what you're seeing here right now. So we're not seeking any approval or design or any consideration for that thirty acres, we don't really have a plan for it, to be honest with you. Um, we have to have a conversation with the, the landowners that we're in contract with on that to figure out how it can, it can be developed under their rural, the rural acreage. Ordinance that's in place for right now.
Like I said, it does go outside of the scope of what we're here to discuss and recommend tonight.
I guess some of the more, more of the feedback I have is that this is currently a hundred and seventy acres of green space, valuable. Um. Making significant changes to characteristics of this golf course is probably a no go, at least in my mind it is. Retaining as much of the golf course as possible, essence of the, it's already landscaped, should, should be a value add. If you're gonna do a lot of digging, dig it in the middle of the community and turn those water features into community gathering spots. Don't push them over the side where they're gonna be, you know, afterthoughts. You know, you have the opportunity to put ponds all the way through the community. With this open space that you're proposing next to it, and put all the houses on that, nice walking trails. Rather than how people have to walk out of their. This is, this is a sprawling community, it's not. It's not what is considered a sustainable prod- project, i- it's, it's just not, it's, it's houses. There, there's no, the road is the center of the entire project, that's the focus of the project when I'm looking at it. It doesn't fit into the guidance that's provided in our mixed use plan. Th- and that's just the feedback that I'm giving you, take it or leave it. Additionally, the, the small housing sizes and the reduced frontages. Um, the HOAs that you're providing, those very small lots. Um. It's gonna be landscaped by the HOA and then how much further down into the development does that exist, is that just only in the R two or is that throughout the entire thing? So we have to have an HOA for small lots because it doesn't make sense for people to have to manage, you know. Two strips of grass on each side of their property and floor in the back, it doesn't make sense for them to have lan- landscaping equipment. The whole purpose of that is to have an HOA take care of that. Cause it's neither convenient or efficient for every single person in that development to have a mower. Just isn't, and that's the whole purpose of the R two and the HOA rules. Um, I guess I would recommend if you wanna do this density, you try to do some quads, triplexes, moving into duplexes, and then R one. But having detached, I think is a bad use of land. It fills up the land and consumes it in a way that we don't see around here and it prevents access from the community to having, to these open spaces, it just creates.
I don't think that the developer needs to be micromanaged, I mean, he understands the market, what will sell.
And my guidance is from the mixed use and what we're trying to do with our.
Yeah, I understand this is your feedback, but I don't think we need to micromanage him either. And I, I like the plan, except personally, I'm sad that, that the prices of the houses are going up, we need affordable housing also.
I, I think it's unfortunate that we're reducing a hundred homes and losing millions of dollars between tax, water, sack, whack, all things to help pay for the water.
Mm-hmm.
Facility and also furthermore to go to the number one item that's been brought up for the last fifteen years of wanting a grocery store, there is someone out there who wants to do it, they are counting rooftops and this is a reduction of that.
Right.
And unfortunately, won't be on this property because there's no commercial, so.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter, I mean, he's not responsible for that.
No, but the mixed use states that within the mixed use, there's twenty percent commercial.
And, and there's availability as an all for all, I, I guess I.
That's part of the development.
Micro managed piece of it, but.
And this is my feedback, this is part of, supposed to be part of the development, it's not supposed to be pushed onto somebody else's development.
And we're letting him know that there's more than one piece of feedback and. I think we've, we've heard.
The, the plan, the plan unit development concept does allow you, does allow the, the decision making body to give and take on some things in order to achieve. Uh, a desire that, oh, a look or aesthetic or an open character, if you will, if you want, so. Hypothetically exchanging the reference that you make in commercial space for. Sixty nine acres of open space might be a fair exchange. You guys won't be making that decision, that'll be up to the city council, but defining the terms of the plan unit development gives you flexibility to deviate from those standards that you're defining that exist in our mixed use. gives you flexibility to deviate from those standards that you're defining that exist in our mixed-use zoning requirements.
Charlie, I think you had something.
Well, I, I think they've done a great job. I mean, they've listened to what the public said last time. They've listened to what we said. Yes, we're losing some houses. We're losing some rooftops that are gonna be counted by somebody wanting to come in for a grocery store. Maybe not on this strip of land, but anywhere in the city. Rooftops are rooftops. But I, I think you've done a great job. I like the open space. I like the ponds. I, I think they'll be affordable homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, no, again, I, further that again, what, what you've done and put together, I know is not an easy, easy task, and again, it's, uh, it's tough, and I appreciate the efforts you guys have put in. I think it, it looks like it could potentially be, yeah, great development if it's able to get through, and I hope it does, and I hope council, council does pass it as it, as it sits at the moment, 'cause I, I see it as a well-thought-through project. And I think it would be a great asset to our community, even though others may not. Uh, like I said, the, the, I've, I've made it no secret of mine that along the corridor area, again, needs to be developed. This is a piece of said development. This is one area, not the entire scope of, of our city, let alone our, our main street, which is the highway in our city center-ish area, whether, whatever you wanna call it. So no, I thank you for your efforts, and yeah, I think it looks great. Good efforts.
One large, uh, component of feedback from last meeting was the traffic, volume of traffic that this would generate. And you've reduced that by the hundred homes, I think. So, and that was why I was asking about that other parcel, because the road, everything would be adjusted to the traffic generated by this. So would that, in the future, accept a larger, you know, having homes like that, increasing the number by that amount again? But as it stands, that does address that concern that we had had about the traffic.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Terry. I, we all, uh, had a meeting with the Anoka County, um, traffic engineers and several other personnel about the traffic discussion. They, they're looking at this as well. Uh, Viking Boulevard is a county, county road, so they're, they're looking at, at the whole project right now. They've given some feedback. But the real heavy part of this left is the traffic study, which, um, we've, we've agreed to, to take the city's direction on, on having that traffic study completed, and I think that's really gonna, you're right, we've, we've reduced a lot of traffic to, to it with the reduction of that. And, and now added the, uh, the information that we hope will be informative for, for traffic coming in and out of, of our community. But also the expansion of the commercial and the other residential areas along Sand Hill Parkway.
Thank you for going through that effort.
So, um, this, this development, I mean, it's, doesn't even come close to the mixed-use maximum density that would be allowed for this type of project, right, for this area?
So, so the developer has come back after the initial proposal with the, with this amendment plan, which meets or is actually below the density standards of the underlying zoning. We're, we're not even talking about potential zoning standards for a mixed-use development. They've, they've scaled back, sort of peeled that layer off and have just gone with what's allowable.
No, no, I understand.
So yes, it's below the standard.
What I'm trying to get at is, um, the fact that, um, um, as one councilman has already, or commissioner has already mentioned, you know, townhomes and, and, you know, more dense type of properties. I mean, wouldn't that also include, say, apartment complexes and, and those type of, you know, fourplexes and, that somebody could, if this doesn't go through, say, wait a minute, I'm going to go ahead and fill this entire area with apartment complexes?
Six units per acre.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, I, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I've heard from many social media sites, as well as people in person, who tell me, um, that they, they don't want us to look like Blaine, right? And, um, part of me understands it, and part of me is like, I don't, I don't really care. I'd be, I'd be okay if some of that came in here. But I've had, I've had multiple people tell me that, you know, if, if you're gonna have a development where you really are gonna have single residential homes as opposed to multifamily structures, that you're now taking away this, this property that's available for development away from that, that purpose. And so therefore, you know, I mean, you know, right now, I mean, it, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but in another ten years, I mean, this property would probably be ideal for multiple apartment complexes and, and huge townhomes, fourplexes, eightplexes. Um, and so therefore, to me, you know, the more that you, again, I, I understand people don't like the extra traffic, but can you imagine the traffic that would be there if, if somebody came through and developed this with that many more, um, people here? I agree with, um, the other comment that it looks to me like this is very well-designed. I was absolutely thrilled that you mentioned that there's sidewalks through, throughout the development, because that, that would, I mean, I absolutely love that you have that trail going back through, through the, um, city park around the ponds. To me, I, I think that's absolutely fabulous, and we need more of that. I mean, that's one, the one thing that, that people, residents have been yelling about is, can we have more trails? And so to me, that, that is absolutely fantastic. And, um, the fact that you will have sidewalks connecting, you know, throughout the, the park and making it accessible for, for the rest of the residents of East Bethel, to me, I think is, is, is a real testament to what you're, what you're thinking about. That's all the comments that I have. I'm, I'm thinking about supporting this. This ordinance, or I mean, this motion, which there hasn't been one yet.
Mr. Chair, you had mentioned, uh, the potential fiscal impact, and I just wanted to recap something that was, um, delivered to the EDA uh, last night during the EDA meeting, not prepared by me, but was presented to them, is the revised project plan would generate a conservative estimate of two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, one-hundred dollars in annual city property tax revenue at its complete build-out in, by twenty-twenty-eight. The city would also collect one million, four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty dollars in sack and whack fees over the life of the project, so between now and build-out in twenty-twenty-eight. This amount could approximately pay off seventy percent of the principal balance of the Met Council Reserve loan, uh, that we have outstanding debt on. In addition, the increased housing units would improve the demographics of the local market, which are in need to attract basic retail food and grocery services to the city. So that, uh, gives a little bit of comment, commentary towards your, uh, comment earlier about the fi, the financial impact.
And that's, I'm sorry, it takes into consideration the revised plan.
The revised plan.
That's where I'll go to. That seventy percent is this.
Correct.
And a previous would have been even greater then.
Yeah, if I remember right in our conversations, that was around ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent of that twenty million that's owed would have been generated with those number of homes.
Yeah.
Uh, this reduction gives us approximately seventy percent, according to the city adminis, the city administrator's information.
Yeah, so still a substantial percentage of what's there that would not be a fiscal impact on the rest of the residents if this was to not even be a development.
Makes your piece of the pie just a little bit smaller.
Thank you.
If you will.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna be really clear that I'm not opposed to the development of this golf course. I am just trying to advocate for a comprehensive plan, which I didn't write. Some of the people on our commission had a major role in that. This mixed-use district is supposed to be our rural city center. Without commercial, that doesn't exist. We are just putting houses into an area to try to get whack and sack and money. Like, we're not considering the cultural aspects of what this means. This is a beautiful golf course that could be designed for mixed-use. That's the purpose of the mixed-use. There's only residential. And this isn't a slam on you guys. You guys are, you guys build nice houses. I just don't think that this current concept meets the conditions that we're trying to do here.
And if I can, Joe, just, because the way you worded it, uh, it, again, it, it makes presumptions that those who may have been here during some of that aren't being considerate of, of that. So I think that's, that's putting, putting words out there, putting words in our mouth that, that aren't true. That also being said, this isn't the only mixed area for what you consider the city center, which we did get rid of the city center, the big blue box that was in this area, but this is not the only mixed-used area, and it is intended to, you know, again, the conversation has went up a number of times, where, you know, rooftops bring red, bring retail. And we have to have both. This happens to be an area, and we happen to have a developer who works, he's able to accommodate one piece of that pie, but that does not encompass the entire scope of what once was our entire city center concept from the past. So just to draw recognition of that, that this is one piece to that. And when you combine it with even elevage, quick trip, the potential on, up to the corner there at Viking and sixty-five, the other areas around that intersection, I think you need to have proper consideration for the project as, or the area as a whole and not just this one piece. That's just my comment based on your feedback.
In considering what you just said and the neighboring spaces, um, I, 'cause I was actually at first thinking about this just as an independent thing, and it made sense to include commercial, but the more I'm thinking about that, it's nice to not have that impacting the, the residential of this, to have that outs, the residential be its own thing, but be adjacent to commercial, so you're not having them butt up right against each other in the neighborhood setting. But there's some pretty easy access to it.
So, the minimum requirements for development. Mixed-use subdivisions are expected to be provided with the full urban infrastructure, sidewalks, parks, streets with good access, interconnectivity. Commercial and business development is most appropriate when adjacent to or visible from Highway sixty-five corridor. In my mind, this means that this has to be a walkable community. It's supposed to be an urban environment. It's all residential. It's not urban. It's residential. It's a suburban sprawling development, 'cause it's not mixed. There's no office space. No, not at all. This is, this has to occur with the developments and the PUDs.
No, it's not his responsibility.
So we're gonna wait till the end to, and then just save it and then not have any commercial development? The point of this is to ensure that we have...
And are we just gonna say no to everybody?
No. That's not what I'm doing. Don't, please don't paint me as anti-development. I'm just trying to ensure that we have commercial development.
I don't think you're ever been funding anybody.
If, if we can, I think Aaron has something that may help context here and help further along.
So, so this is the approved plan for the elevage development.
Right.
This is the elevage commercial space, right here.
So this commercial right there?
Commercial.
That's not part of this development?
No, let me finish though, so that you can understand how this is gonna work, and, and you can take it or leave it. This trail right here that leads to the back of a proposed grocery store is the cul-de-sac in this development that's gonna come out right in here.
Which also has a sidewalk right in.
Which will have a sidewalk and a space, okay? Then I'm gonna flip back to this trail we've asked them to move, because it was gonna land in the middle of a pond. They are gonna relocate that trail somewhere in here, which is gonna land in the middle of this green space. So you will conceivably be able to walk from Viking Meadows through the trail, through the park space, through the elevage trail, to their trail system, or here. It's gonna come through somewhere in here, most likely, which is gonna lead you half a block or a block from the commercial space. So, uh, that's the connectivity part that city staff are still working with both developers to ensure that both of them have a walkability, uh, concept as you're, you're, uh, alluding to.
Well, I think, I think what he was trying to get at was that, and, and please stop me if I'm wrong, is that this development does not have the commercial side of it, right?
Yep.
And you're reading from the comprehensive plan?
Yep.
Okay, so the guideline for the comprehensive plan, I believe, and I could be wrong, I don't wanna...
Very seldom.
Thank you, but I, I, I do get there every once in a while. Is that the mixed, the mixed-use with the commercial development and having a certain percentage is for the entire area and not just a single development.
Correct.
And so, everything that's, that's gonna be done on elevage property and also across the street where we have that entire business development, would fulfill that, um, not to mention that, um, my understanding of the comprehensive plan is it's an agreement with Met Council. And it's merely a guideline for us to use when we're considering how we want to do the development for our city. But we don't have to, um, follow it line by line as to, you know, how we develop our city. And, and if there is a conflict, the city is allowed to submit a correction to Met Council to conform with the comprehensive plan. I understand your feeling about wanting more development, and I, um, I, you know, there, there is a portion of our community that, that, that would like that as well. I would like a certain percentage. I mean, we've been talking about a grocery store for as long as I can remember, um, back before we got the water tower and, you know, Soderquist left the neighborhood. We've been talking about it, so, um, I wouldn't mind seeing at least that much come back to the city. Um, but I don't think that we are necessarily, um, bound by the comprehensive plan, um, to the letter of the law.
Very eloquently said, Randy. You helped clarify one of my comments earlier, so thank you for saying that in a more clear manner.
If I could, uh, just reiterate that, um, in a plan unit development, which is a requirement of a mixed-use district of the city, allows for commercial, residential, parks, and open space as such that are in compliance with the comprehensive plan. However, the purpose of a plan unit development is to allow for flexibility and variation in exchange for higher standards of development or creativity, architectural control, natural resource protection, landscaping, public parks, public and private open space that protect pedestrian access through the multi-use corridor through opportunity. So that gives you the flexibility to make exchanges for what the standards are.
Yeah, I personally don't see that we are exchanging this for higher standards. We are taking concessions by having all houses and not a lot, or not, not following the twenty percent general commercial.
You don't consider it a higher standard to have le, less homes and more green space?
Sixty, sixty acres of open space is amazing.
But he already said that this is necessary, 'cause it's, it's already a watershed, so this is, this is beyond the control of the developer. These are there not because of beauty or function, or, no, they're strictly there because of function. If it was supposed to be aesthetic, it'd be in the middle of the community, and the community be centered on the park that supposedly exists with the screen space, and that's not the case. It's pushed to an edge.
If I can ask here, I noticed that the notes from the Parks Commissioner that they're gonna have you put fifteen hundred dollars per lot towards a, uh, nature play facility? So is that fifteen hundred per two, of each of the two-hundred-and-fifty-two lots?
Right, so...
So that's like just under four-hundred thousand directly towards a nature play facility, which is, can you point where you think that's gonna end up on this plan, right in the middle?
Yeah, I'll point to it here in a second. The fifteen hundred dollars is the park fee the city has to place if there's trail systems and connectivity put throughout the development, which...
City has place if there's trail systems and connectivity put throughout the development, which we have. Normally that would be a two-thousand dollar if you want us not to do that. And then it also is either fee or land, so you have both. So that nature play area that we had proposed. Does go right in the center of this entire, the middle. Well, we actually have this pegged right center of. This entire community here, so, and that was intentional as you come down and wanted you to land right in the middle of this. Community with the park and the overlook beyond it. So yes, that right there would be the nature player and this is an active nature play area. That's what we proposed. We had some presentation of. What that looks like in our Ramsay communities. We have two communities there that have the same idea. One of them has a zip line through the forest.
Matt, can you come back to the microphone so we can make sure that it's picking it up?
One of those has a zip line through the forest and the other one actually is a really awesome, um, design that, that Heather worked with. With their park, um, planner and we, we welcome the park commission to come and be with, with us out there to kinda see how that works. But our desire is to see the dollars that we put into the park fee come back to, to building, create that active play facility.
So, thank you for that. That's one of the things that, um, I do appreciate is that you, I feel you were intentional about, you took away the homes and then you purposefully. Did something with what was existing. I, I don't personally feel that it was just because it had to be there. You made a point to put it right there, so. That's how I see it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
In, in response, Matt, to your, um, information about wetland classifications. Uh, and to help answer for, for Commissioner Ryder. As we talked about with the Strandland Farms concept plan, some wetlands you can't do anything with. They're classified. A certain standard and you can throw all the money you want at the DNR, but they're not gonna let you do a darn thing with it. So. My assumption is a couple of these within this development are classified as such that they're gonna have to stay where they're at. Uh, others, there is a, um, a one-to-two ratio exchange in the wetland credit bank. Uh, if Capstone were to want to take an existing pond that wasn't classified and fill it in. It's gonna be cost prohibitive then for, for them to buy wetland credits in some other location, not in our county. Uh, but that's gonna benefit somebody who's got a wetland bank and they're gonna broker those funds and profit from them. Which ultimately cuts into the bottom line, which then increases the cost of a house, an individual house within the development because. Capstone has to make up for the difference somewhere or this project isn't financially feasible, right? So there has to be. A little bit of creativity, if you will, in order to make some of this work. Especially in our geographic location where it seems like every ten miles, there's another. Wetland that you have to work yourself around in some form and half the time we're found out that you can't do anything with them based on. The core and the county soil and water and, uh, so some of that is. By design, but some of that is also, it is what it is. They can't, they have to work around it.
Yeah, I'm just asking them to turn those feature, those. Cast the sides into features of the project. That's what I'm asking them to do. I think it, it would be really easy to turn those ponds into. To the center of the community. Uh, that's, that's my personal opinion. I don't, you know, you're taking out hole eight and nine, I think it is. And you're digging that up on the boundary. You know, but I just think that'd be more appropriate being on, in the center of the community, putting houses around it. I think that add a lot more value to the community than casting it aside. I really don't think it would cost you anymore to do it.
So. Can I ask a question? Commissioner Ryder. Do you not feel that with the current plan? That that park space slash, um, ponding. Would be not in the center of this development, but would be in the center of this development and the elevage development? Providing open space for both communities? I mean, if you were to think of those, I mean, I know they're not, but if you were to think of both of these. Developments as one development. Then I think. I mean, just, just off of, you know, my perspective here that. To me, I, I think that, that they're actually doing elevage a favor by putting the ponding right there on the bor- border with elevage and. And providing open space for, for both developments. That's just my thought off the top of my head. Mister Chair. I would like to make a motion, uh, to approve the Viking Meadows amended concept plan as written.
A second.
Thank you, Randy. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I feel we've had extensive already. But hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Moves forward to council.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Now, this is, a concept plan approval is not an approval of the entire subdivision. There are numerous steps along the way that will.
Come back.
Ultimately come back multiple times and that has to do with design standards, preliminary plat, P U D requirements and all of those things, but. This gives, uh, the now, um. Approval, if you will, from the recommendation to the city council to ultim- ultimately work with. The developer to design a preliminary plat that is something that would fit community standards. So this is a required step as our ordinance, uh, does define it, so. Thank you for getting this done.
Thank you. All right, council updates. Mister DeRoche, council member?
Good evening.
Evening.
It's gonna be short and sweet. Basically, we're still working on the budget. Working on ways to lower the levy if we can. We did get informed from the sheriff's department that there was a lot of money out there. That is gonna come back in some form in public safety. In excess of five-hundred thousand dollars. So that was kinda nice to know why we didn't know sooner. Who knows? But it pays to do some digging. Other than that. I got nothing. Questions? I mean, it's been, we didn't have any meeting last night, so. No questions? My goodness. Oh yeah, we are talking about, uh, there's discussion about a moratorium on cannabis. That's, that's gotta ways to go. Pretty sure. Other than that, I, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Before I entertain a motion for, to adjourn, I would just. I said before I do. I said before I do. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can only hear out of one ear.
What? Just really a general housekeeping item. Uh, if anybody has things that are not in. The packet that need to be added or things you'd like to bring forth, please make sure that's submitted to city council or to, to the city staff. In a timely manner to make it into this, so it's not being received the day of and. Gives everyone an opportunity to understand and review any items that come forth. So just housekeeping for the future. If anybody has things to add.
I have something to add. But actually, there's a question that, but to clarify for us regarding communication by email. Are we able to communicate one-on-one about topics under, on our agenda or? Does that restriction only apply to if we had a quorum of people in an email thread?
My advice to you would be to submit your question to me or your comment to me. Let me distribute it to the group and solicit the responses back and then get the response back to you.
Right, but I'm talking about if some, let's say, if I wanted to communicate to another member to ask their opinion about something that's on our agenda item. That's an example. Is that permissible?
That would not be advisable.
Okay.
For clarification, it's called serial communication.
Thank you, Bob. And for the record, didn't hear it, Bob referenced that that would be considered serial communication. One, one individual talking to another individual who could then talk to another individual and talk to another individual. It's continuous. And I, Glenn's point was just a one-on-one as opposed to one person talking to another who talks to a third, who talks to a fourth, who talks to a fifth. Which is what Bob was referencing.
Yeah, I think, I think you start down a slippery slope once you.
Yeah.
Move beyond the public forum of communication with other commissioners or council members that. It's about the perception. It's not about what actually happened. If someone were to find out or. Uh, a subpoena would come to your email account through an open records request because someone found out you were talking to another commissioner about a. Particular item that was on the active agenda. Then now we have to, uh, serve you with a subpoena to get into your email records and I don't know if you want your email history. Subjected to an open records request to find or not find the one item that someone may. Believe or not believe is located in your email box. Uh, it's a really slippery slope.
So is that just agenda items in current business? Like if you just wanted to ask somebody their opinion on something that wasn't on the agenda? Or how they viewed a specific thing in the.
If you wanna talk to Glenn about how to grow the best tomatoes, feel free.
Wait a minute, cannabis. Wait, was he gonna grow cannabis?
But if it is a, if it is an active agenda item, if it's something that we've tabled that we need to talk about next time around, it's not a final decision. I wouldn't advise to have a conversation about it outside of this public venue. Just protect yourself.
So then what about, um, communicating with the, the city council members? I mean, let's say you have a. General email that you're sending to all of them. Do you think that you, we should be sending them to you to send to them?
So you are residents of the community. You are allowed to reach out to your council members. It wouldn't be advisable for, from me to the council members to distribute the question around to each other and talk about it amongst themselves via. Electronic communications in order to come up with the best answer for you. Again, it's about the, the perception, right? But also, you're also a resident. They're also your representative, so you have a right to talk to them. In some form. I don't think I would ever use the. Copy-all feature to put every council member in an email. I would individually send the emails to each one of them. I wouldn't put them all blanketing in one. But that's my own knowledge and protection of the city, protection of the recipients, protection of the. Cause essentially, if a blanket message was sent to all of you and one of you hits reply all and the next one of you hits reply all. And you, the three or four of you talk about the same topic, that's now a serial meeting. We don't wanna do that. Yeah. So in terms of the accidental, I didn't know I hit reply all, if we avoid that altogether, we avoid that potential. Open records, open meeting law request and the, uh, violation, uh, for an open meeting law request. If it's determined by, I believe it is, there's a board appointed by the secretary of state or the attorney general. The fine goes to you civilly. It's not the city. So, I mean, feel free to talk amongst yourselves if you have plenty of money to throw around and give back to the state of Minnesota. But I think we all give enough to the state of Minnesota already. You don't need to do it in that form, so.
Just for clarity, like if, um, like for example, uh, Councilman Miller's ordinance, calling him and asking him for his feedback and his intention on it. Is appropriate as a member of the community?
I believe so. It, it was, it was publicly, um. It was published in a public, uh, meeting setting. Uh, it was on an agenda. You're a citizen, right? You have every right to call him. It will be a public hearing, uh, next Monday night. You can show up. You can give your advice. You can give your feedback. I get calls all the time from residents of the city of Cambridge who wanna talk to me about proposed ordinances.
Just don't call the city council members about the same thing, discuss the same thing.
Well, you can, just don't say, hey.
That's what this guy said.
Hey, Councilman Miller, would you call Councilman Smith and tell him that Joe said this? And then would you also then call. Councilman DeRoche and tell him that I said this, cause as soon as they, they, the same topic comes around. Into the majority, it's now a serial meeting. But you can call them individually and say, hey, you know that ordinance that's coming up? I'm in full support or we should have X, Y, Z. Hang up, call the next one. Hey, that ordinance that you guys have proposed, I'm in favor of it or I'm not in favor of it. Hang up, call the next one. Email individually is much cleaner and faster communication, obviously, as we know in today's modern technology and society. But feel free to reach out to your council members in whatever form you prefer or they prefer, uh, where you feel like you get the best feedback. I would say. You know, if you run into them in church on Sunday or if you run into them at.
The cannabis farm?
Wherever. Frisbee Golf or out on the golf course. I mean, that's a perfect opportunity. They, they would, I would expect, I, I get it all the time. People approaching me in the grocery store or Walmart or when I'm out with my significant other eating a meal, they like to come up to the table and then interrupt the entire. Evening, if you will. So, so I, I would just say avoid the perception that you've had three or four or a, a simple majority. Involved in a conversation. And again, that can happen by accident. Somebody replies all to someone's reply all and now you've got everybody.
Yep.
So can I, do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. My understanding is the general rule is that you cannot talk together amongst. Your commission slash council member slash. Whatever body it is that you're a part of, that you cannot talk. On the same topic of items that are coming before your body. With a quorum. So in this case, it would be four. However, like he was saying. You may talk to me about something and then I'm, I may accidentally mention it to Glenn. And Glenn goes, oh gee, Tanner, guess what, guess what I heard? We've now, like Mister, uh, DeRoche has said, we've now committed a serial meeting of a quorum. So, um. In general parlance, it's probably not a good idea to talk to any, any members more than one about anything that, that is coming up. On our agenda. Now you can talk to any of the council members or all the council members. You can talk to anybody who is on. The Parks Commission. You can talk to all of them. It doesn't matter. It's only this body where we cannot get together and talk about this. Away from the open meeting.
So if there's a distribution of information, like let's say you brought, um, a different version of Councilman Miller's, uh, amendment tonight. You send that to me, I can distribute it to the group. I'm not part of this group. I, I'm not appointed. I'm, I'm a city staff member, but I can relay the information you're hoping to get to everyone without.
Got it.
Reaching that level of a potential serial meeting or a meeting without proper notice.
Thank you, everyone for coming. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so.
Motion is a second.
A second.
Motion is a second. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
It, it, it went okay, yep.